May I come to order, please take your seats. Good evening, and welcome to the 2024 Annual Town Meeting. I intend to honor your town moderator. Every town meeting is part pursuit to a warrant that's issued by the Select Board, and this is no different. Here is no objection, I'll forego the reading of the warrant and begin by reviewing the returned service. I've inspected the annual town meeting warrant and determined it was properly executed by the Select Board and served by a constable of the town of Littleton. We are in session. As is our custom, we'll begin first with the pledge to the flag. Okay. Thank you very much. And, quite as also, in our custom in recent years is to, Mia Clunt from Littleton High School, lead us in the National Anthem, so Mia, here on, once again, thank you. Thank you, Mia, and before you go too far, the Board is aware that you may be celebrating a birthday. And I know that the Select Board would like to join you and wish you a happy birthday, so I'll turn it over to the Select Board member, Dick Coase.
Happy birthday, Mia, and I think everybody here wants to wish you a happy birthday, so I'll start it. Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday, dear Mia. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Mia. Yeah, I understand, but he may have you for one more year, so that's a good day for us. Okay. Just like to make a few recognitions, and before I turn it over to the Select Board for a recognition. I know that all of us, the Los Rovers individuals, you know, lies with the town of Littleton. The master of three individuals who meant a lot to the town, contributed a lot to the town over the years. And I'd like to mention a former Select Board member, Dick Montney, also a member of this Finance Committee for many years, was my appointee to the Finance Committee. And Dick did an awful lot for the town, and we miss him today and we will always. Also, I'd like to mention our former Police Chief, Anthony King, who we lost last year. And now is a thirty-plus-year member of the department, was chief for about three years of his career. Quite a good cop, and again, someone else that we're going to miss going forward. And finally, I'll mention educated former Littleton High School athletic director, Jim McKenna, who I think a lot of people who may grow up in this town have, well, they may have different memories of growing up with Jim McKenna as a gym teacher, but he was quite a guy and he left a lot of legacy. And we lost him last year, and he, I wanted to remember those three individuals in particular today. Now, I'd like to turn it over to the Chair of the Select Board for a presentation.
Uh, thank you. This year, approximately a month ago, we had a retirement of our Fire Chief, Mr. Tom Clancy. If I could have you come forward. Not used to seeing him out here, he's usually over on the side. Tom? Is he here? Or is he? Thank you. I wrote down a few words. Last month, actually March 29th, I think, you answered your last call. The Fire Department put on a little retirement ceremony for you, and a few members of the community in the town were able to recognize you, and I thought it would be appropriate, and the Board thought it would be appropriate to recognize you here as well with a plaque of our appreciation. I wanted to say thank you, Jen and family, for your commitment and sacrifice to the town in allowing our beloved chief to serve our community for nearly quarter a century. Like most firefighters, EMTs and paramedics, Tom does not like us to speak of him as a hero. But I reminded of a quote that has never been more relevant than it is today as we thank Chief Clancy for his service. "The most heroic thing we do are shrouded in others' tragedy." For Tom and others in his profession, this quote is a reality that plays itself out every single day, on or off duty. Though he may not like to be called a hero, I promise you, every single time there was a tone at home or at the firehouse, he showed up, and he was someone's hero that day. Tom is a man of character that spent every day committed to the safety of his community. I, for one, have slept better for the last twenty-five years knowing that heroes like Tom would be there to answer the call whenever tragedy presented itself to me, my family, or to my community. I thank you for your service, the Select Board thanks you for your service, and the residents and businesses of our community thank you for your service. Please join the Select Board in congratulating Chief Tom Clancy on his retirement. Just to let you know, it says, "Presented to Chief Thomas Clancy with sincere appreciation for twenty-four years of service to the town of Littleton." Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, before I give a few brief ground rules and we get into the items that are on the consent agenda, I want to recognize Steve Anoudi, the Chair of the Finance Committee, who's going to give the financial overview report for the town. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We have a lot to cover tonight in a very short period of time, so I'd like to start right away. A couple of weeks ago, the town's bond rating was affirmed once again by Standard &amp; Poor's. The town first went to a triple-A bond rating back in 2014, so it's been ten years of consistent, good financial results for the town. Some of the things that S&amp;P looks for when they rate the town is that we have good financial policies in place, we follow those policies, we have a good level of reserves, we have a plan to spend those reserves, and we have a way to replenish those reserves, and a proven way to replenish those reserves year after year. That's why when they say things like focus on long-term sustainability and a strong institutional framework, that's basically what they're referring to. So I'd like to congratulate anybody who had a hand in getting this reaffirmed, not only this year, but for the past ten years. So thank you all who had a hand in this. For those of you who came to the November Town Meeting, you heard me talk about the pressures that we were going to face in doing the budget for this meeting here, and it really came to fruition. When we started this process, after we received everybody's budgets, we were $3.3 million in a deficit position. And being in a deficit position to begin with is not something that's new. We expect that to happen. However, it was the size of that deficit that concerned us. As you can see on the screen, we made $2.2 million in expense cuts to get here. And a lot of the detail that we're talking about starts on page four of the Town Meeting booklet. The Finance Committee report goes into a lot more detail, not only in the cuts, but on what's situated in the rest of the financial articles for Town Meeting. We also had the fortune to have a million dollars of other funds available to us. Most of that was ARPA funds, which is COVID relief funds from the federal government. We were able to identify a million dollars' worth of one-time expenditures within the budget and use those one-time funds to pay for it. If we hadn't had those funds available to the town, our discussion tonight would be a lot different than what it's going to be tonight. So we're presenting tonight in the Town Meeting booklet is a balanced budget, all the financial articles. And in particular, we can point out Article Four. Article Four, the town operating budgets increased by 4.45%. We're adding three new firefighters and one new police officer. The education for the town's school department and the Chauvet Tech budgets are increasing combined $1.1 million, a 4.57%. Our debt service increases by another $1.1 million. We're seeing the support for the SOAR project, the debt service associated with that. We're beginning to realize the debt service for the senior center construction, and the Indian Hill building purchase will be bonded later on this year. Employee benefits, a decrease of $138,000. We had a decrease in our OPEB and pension assessments, and we had a slight increase in our health benefits for town employees. Where does this put us in summary for Article Four? You can see it's a $3.4 million increase, a 5.92% over the previous fiscal year. And if you look at the graphs on the side, Town, School, and Other, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five, you can see the steady increases in those numbers. So that's the FY '25 budget, again, there's more detail in your Town Meeting booklets. Looking to the future for the next few years. A couple of years ago, the Finance Committee identified twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six as difficult budgeting years. We've dealt with twenty-four, we're dealing with twenty-five tonight, twenty-six is still on the radar. And as we look to the future, we're also adding twenty-seven and twenty-eight to that mix. And you can see the forecasted budget variances as deficits for those three years. Again, having a deficit at this point in time is not unusual, it's the size of those deficits right now. When we construct our forecast, we're very conservative on the revenue side, and we're a little bit more aggressive on the expense side. So those numbers will change as we get closer, refining the expense numbers and getting a good handle on what the revenue stream would be for the town. One of the big unknowns right now for the town that could help these deficits is the revenue we're expecting on the Littleton Common Area redevelopment, particularly 550 King Street. We just don't know right now how much we're going to receive from that project, when it's going to begin, and how long that process will be. And because of those unknowns, any benefit that the town would receive from that project are not included in those variances you see at the top of the screen. It just wouldn't be prudent for us to put that numbers in there. One thing that we can say for certain is that when we do receive that revenue stream, this is not extra money for the town to spend. It has to go against those operating deficits for the existing services that we have in town. To go into a little bit more detail for FY '26 and beyond, if you look at the graph on the right side, you can see the steady increase in revenues that we're projecting for the three years. And in the yellow circle, you can see an average annual increase in our revenue stream of $1.6 million, a 2.44%. On the expense side, same increase on the graph on the side. The average increase is $2.8 million per year, a 4%. Having a revenue stream of $1.6 million with expenses growing at $2.8 million is not how we create a sustainable budget, so something in this process has to give. The third stool of our three-legged stool is capital. In a normal year, our normal capital plan for the town averages somewhere between one and a half and two million dollars. We've asked the department heads in town to put together their capital plan and their forecast, and for the next three years, we're seeing requests for $19 million. We're projected to begin next fiscal year, '26, with the capital stabilization balance of above $4.6 million. So here, something else has to give. One of the easy ways to solve this problem is deferring capital, and we've done that in the past. Push it off for as long as we can, but that has an expense to it, extra maintenance costs for things that we need to maintain that should have been retired in previous years, or extra costs on the purchase because expenses compound year over year. It's something that the Finance Committee, Select Board, and the Finance Team at Town Hall need to get together and work through these requests. One of the things that's not included in that capital plan is Shaker Lane. And we've all heard that something is going on with the Shaker Lane School, and it's true. Town Meeting has already appropriated a million dollars for the feasibility study. It's ongoing, it's just beginning right now. Right now, we don't know whether this is going to be new construction, a renovation, or a combination of the two. One thing that we do know is if we follow the timeline for the MSBA, that's the Mass School Building Authority, they manage the school buildings for the state. If we follow the timeline, we'll be coming back in about eighteen months for an appropriation for that building. That's not very long. Another thing that we can tell you right now is the Finance Committee, as of right now, would look to do that as a debt exclusion override, the same way we did the police station, this building, and Russell Street. Go back one second. Over the next eighteen months, until we have to come back to Town Meeting, the Shaker Lane Building Committee and the School Department will be holding numerous sessions with the public to get their input. So by the time we come back to the November Town Meeting, we will know exactly what we're doing with the building, how much it's going to cost, and what the impact to the taxpayer would be. Over the next three and five years, I mean, I just laid out operational deficits, capital plan that's over what our funding could possibly be, Shaker Lane, and an unknown revenue stream. But those are issues right now, and those are issues that we've already identified. We have time between the Finance Committee and the Select Board and the Finance Team internally to work through those issues before they become problems. How do we do that? We need to spend smart. We need to look at every expense that we do today and know that it compounds into the future. Our biggest expense is salaries, salaries increase. We need to justify every expenditure that we do and every new hire and new position that we put on the books. And we also need to work on fine-tuning what that revenue stream is so we can judge exactly the difficulty that we're going to face over the next couple of years. I just have to reiterate, that's a lot of information, and some of it can be construed as tough information to hear. We are in excellent financial shape. S&amp;P has again affirmed our triple-A bond rating, and we intend to keep it that way moving forward. Thank you very much for your attention, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Have a good Town Meeting.
Thank you, Steve. Just a few preliminaries before we get to the consent agenda. I hope everyone picked up at the registration table, copy of the Town Meeting booklet, which contains the motions for tonight's meeting. Also, there's a green update sheet that contains three revised motions, revised from the publishing of the report. There are motions on Articles Eight, Ten, and Twenty-nine. And also, at the registration tables, there are yellow sheets in the event that anyone would like to propose a written amendment to one of the motions before the meeting. We ask that you do so on writing and at the appropriate time make the amendment and deliver the written motion language to the town clerk. So we thank you for helping us with that new procedure. Formal presentations are ten minutes. Debate is limited to three minutes, and you can't speak twice on an article. There will be no new business taking up after 10:30 PM unless the meeting agrees to do so. And unless there's an objection, I intend to recognize tonight all town employees and consultants who are non-registered voters, non-residents. And Town Meeting guidelines are on the website, but it's pretty much common courtesy and common sense. Please use the center microphone when you wish to speak, wait to be recognized, and please state your name and address for the record. All questions should be addressed through the moderator. No rude or disrespectful speech, no directly referring to a member of this body. When calling a question, and this sometimes comes up, please use the center microphone to do so, and make it the only comment you make on that trip to the microphone. Don't make a speech and then close the door behind you and say, "I moved the question." Make it the only thing you say when you come to the microphone. Town officials sometimes wish to express personal views, and they should just indicate that they're speaking as an individual and not as a board or committee member, when that's the case. Okay, we'll now start the meeting with the consent agenda. And this is a procedure we've adopted in recent years by which we bundle together the more routine, non-controversial articles. We never put anything on the consent agenda, the Town Meeting hasn't voted previously. And that's the case this year, everything on the consent agenda is something you've approved on previous years, consent agendas. I hope everyone has the handout that breaks down the articles by consent agenda, non-consent agenda. And I'll also note that we have four articles on the warrant that we're going to be asked to pass over on this evening. There'll be no motion offered for Article Three, Budget Line Item Transfers, and then the three citizens petitions that are on the warrant, Articles Thirty-one, Thirty-two, and Thirty-three. We will be passing over each of them this evening. We will not be taking any affirmative action on those. So in fairness, if you were waiting to speak to any of those citizens petitions, please be advised that that will not be happening at tonight's meeting at the petitioner's request. Okay, I'm going to read to you the titles of the articles that are proposed for the consent agenda. And hopefully, we can get them, yeah, get them on the screen. They are Article One, Annual Report, Bills of Prior Years, Four-Fifths Vote. Article Five, Fiscal Year 2025, Water Enterprise Fund Budget. Article Six, Amend Fiscal Year 24, Water Enterprise Fund Operating Budget. Article Seven, Fiscal Year 2025, Sewer Enterprise Fund Operating Budget. Article Nine, Transfer Funds to Community Preservation Committee Budget. Article Fourteen, Fiscal Year 2025, Departmental Revolving Funds. Article Sixteen, Authorized Transfer for Multiple Trust Funds. And, looking at the... Article Twenty-two, The Receipts Reserved for Appropriation for PEG Access Fund. Article Twenty-three, Fiscal Year 2025, Compensation Grid. Article Twenty-four, Capital Stabilization Fund. Article Twenty-seven, Use of Debt Exclusion Stabilization Fund for FY 2025 Excluded Debt. And Article Twenty-eight, Appropriation of Transportation Network Company Funds. Now, those are the articles that are proposed for the consent agenda. They're all simple majority articles with the exception of Article Two, which you'll note is a four-fifths vote, in other words, an eighty percent vote, required for bills of prior years. That fact means that everything on the consent agenda is a four-fifths vote. So we normally get a unanimous vote on the consent agenda, or near unanimous, but we will require eighty percent or higher on this, in this vote in order for all the items on the consent agenda to pass. I didn't hear any objections to any of those articles, is that the case? Or is there anyone who would like to discuss anything that I read off on the consent agenda? Or are we pretty satisfied with the list? As I said, there's nothing on there that you haven't voted in prior years, and they're not terribly controversial articles. But if not, we'll proceed to our first vote under the new electronic voting system. And I hope that, for those who came in late, it's a simple matter of there'll be a thirty-second voting period. You press one, the green button for yes, the two, the red button for no, and you may press it as many times as you want in that thirty-second interval, but the last time you press it, that's the vote that's going to get recorded. So just remember that, in case you legitimately change your mind in the midst of things. So we're going to, I should see if our folks at Maridi are ready for that. Can we tee that one up? And you'll see that the consent agenda includes Articles One and Two, Five, Six, and Seven, Nine, Fourteen, Sixteen, Twenty-two, Twenty-three, Twenty-four, Twenty-seven, and Twenty-eight. Okay. Now, all those in favor of the separate and individual affirmative motions under those articles, you will, and we haven't started the clock yet, but when we do, you'll press yes. yes for 1, and if you do not approve of this consent agenda, you'll press no. You'll have 30 seconds to make your selections and then we'll see how things come out. So I'm going to declare that the voting period is open. You'll see the rolling tally of votes, but not the, not how the vote is going, so as not to influence you in any way. Voting is closed. Anyone that pressed the button after 30 seconds, it will not be tallied. And you'll see that the consent agenda does pass by the necessary 4/5ths majority. 351 in favor, 12 opposed. And I declare the vote. Thank you very much. Well, that went well. I'm sure something's going to happen at some point to us. Thank you. Thank you again for that. We like to warm you up with the consent agenda and then we get into the more controversial things. Well, at this point, I guess we're going to go to Article 3 because that was on the consent agenda, came off because we didn't have a motion. So we have to formally take action to pass over Article 3, which is line item budget transfers, of which the town does not propose any at this point in time. So Madam Clerk, please indicate that town meeting takes no affirmative action on Article 3 and we pass that item over. And that will bring us directly to Article 4, which is the operating budget. And before we get into that, does the Finance Committee have an Article 4 specific presentation, Mr. Vernuti? Or is that, okay. Very good. Okay, the motion for Article 4, been moved and seconded by the Finance Committee, that the town vote to approve Article 4 as printed in the warrant. So it's exactly as printed in your booklet. And the way that we've handled this in previous years is that I will go through each of the departmental totals. Anyone that wishes to hold on any particular budgetary line item, ask a question or to object to it, whatever it may be, just raise your hand and shout out "Hold" so we get you recorded on that. We'll come back to that once we get through the entire operating budget and we'll deal with everything that's been held. You'll see in the presentation, there are two years of prior fiscal information and then what's proposed, what's recommended for FY 2025 by the Finance Committee. I propose to read only the totals that are recommended for FY 2025, and that will save us some time. So again, I'm going to go through each of the budgets by total. If anyone has an objection or has a question, you put a "Hold" on that line item. If nothing's held, we'll take a vote on the entire package, but I think most people are pretty used to the way we do this, so we'll start with General Government. Town Report, Town Meeting, $31,800. Moderator, $100. Select Board, $17,800. Town Administrator, $492,703. Finance Committee, $1,300. Reserve Fund, $245,000. Town Accountant, $352,288. Audit Zero. Assessor, $323,970. Treasurer, $353,663. Tax Collector, $129,470. Town Council, $280,000. Human Resources, $372,201. Information Systems, $704,179. Tax Title, $16,000. Hold on tax title. Town Clerk, $187,361. Elections and Registrations, $55,800. Conservation Commission, $125,162. Planning Board, $221,304. Hold on Planning Board. Okay. Appeals Board, $300. Land Use, $93,980. Okay, for a total for General Government of $4,438,000. On the Public Safety, Police, $2876,592. Fire EMS, $2728,007. Building Department, $263,166. Emergency Management, $5,075. Crossing Guards, zero. K-9 Control, $38,325. For a total, Public Safety, $6,608,936. Public Works, DPW, $978,840. Roadway Repairs, $1,029,500. Parks, $278,838. Snow and Ice, $200,000. Transfer Station, $469,125. Street Lighting, $17,000. Sustainability Committee, $2,000. Waste Water, Store and Water Management, $698,249. B&amp;M Crossing, $3,000. Landfield Closure, $130,000. Cemetery Department, $202,890. For a total of Public Works, $4,9,443. Health and Human Services, Health Department, $162,261. Neshofer Associated Boards of Health, $35,000. Animal Inspector, zero. Nursing Services, $15,000. Mental Health Services, zero. Elder and Human Services, $424,445. Veterans Agent, $20,324. Veterans Benefits, $175,000. Disability Commission, $1,200. Hold on Disability Commission. Okay. Total for Health and Human Services, $833,230. Culture and Recreation, Ruben Hor Library, $890,163. Parks and Recreation, $269,028. Patriots Day, zero. I'm going to make a proposal for next year. Any budget that's been zero for three consecutive years probably ought to come off the total of the budget, but Memorial Day, $1,250. Historical Commission, $4,480. Cultural Council, $5,600. Shade Tree Committee, $5,000. Total Culture and Recreation, $1,175,071. Municipal Building Committee, $5,000. Public Buildings, $939,459. Property and Liability Insurance, $583,000. Central Communications, $115,000. Total for Other General Government, $1,829,459. Education, Littleton School Department, $25,488,928. Technical School Expenditures, $894,143. The total for Education is $26,383,071. Then we have Employee Benefits. The total of Employee Benefits is $9,524,200. Debt Service, Long-Term Debt Service, $2,992,173. Short-Term Debt, $1,950,350. For total, Debt Service, $4,942,523. And then you'll see a list of transfers into the General Fund, which total $1,263,946. And I will note that the transfer from Debt Exclusion Stabilization Fund was made under the consent agenda, so it's presented for informational purposes here. That's the transfer of $349,879. It's about seven transfers down on the list. Transfers out of the General Fund, $1,578,812. For total operating budget of $60,889,765. A net operating budget of $59,625,819, less the transfers. We'll now go back and before we deal with the few items that were held, I would just ask if we could take a vote on all the non-held line items contained within Article 4? I don't know if we've got that queued up. Yeah, it is. So I'm going to declare a 30-second voting period open. This is the non-held line items. I'm sorry, could we stop? I'm still bammeling on here. For the next 30 seconds, you can vote yes or no on all the items that were not held. Okay, time's up. And there were 404 votes cast, there were 388 in favor, 16 opposed. It required a majority vote, so the non-held line items have been passed. We'll now work our way back through the items that were held. And if we can get a vote on each of those, we'll have an entire budget. The first such item I had was tax title expenses, $16,000. Someone, the person that held that, come forward.
Jared Delpiore, New Estate Road. It's more of a question. As I understand it, the Supreme Court recently passed a ruling affecting how tax title works, and I'd just like to understand how the town's going to deal with that.
Mr. Moderator, to the previous speaker, through you. Chuck DeCose, Select Board. Mr. Delpiore, that matter is not being discussed right now. The matter is you held $16,000 put aside for tax title. I can answer the question as to what the $16,000 represents. It's to pay legal fees to collect past due taxes.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to be sure the town...
Happy to look into it for you and get you an answer on that other question.
Thank you. All right, Planning Board, yes?
Ed Foltz, 619 Newtown. In 2023, there were $0 in salaries, and now for 2025, we're at $218,729. Why? What changed in less than two years that caused us to significantly increase for a board that is supposed to be volunteer, with maybe one staff member to help do paperwork? And I hope they're not getting paid $218,000 a year because I want that job.
Okay. Assistant Town Administrator?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Foltz, that's, we've made some rearrangements in that budget that used to be under land use, and now we are transferring back to the Planning Board budget.
So the land use budget came down?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. What is our next held item? Okay. Thank you. Disability Commission. Who had the "hold" on that one?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. George Sanders, 672 Gray Road. I want to point out the fact that as a member of the Disability Commission, we have asked the town to do a survey of the town of Littleton so that Littleton can qualify for monies that the Disability Commission has for the 351 citizens in town in the state of Massachusetts. Two years ago, they gave out over $4 million to 44 communities. We asked that. It would cost roughly between $35,000 to $40,000. We brought that to the attention of the Select Board. I also brought it to the attention of the Town Administrator, and they said that they were going to get it in there somehow. So I just want the citizens here to know tonight that our this budget that we have for '25, they said that they was going to give us the money so that we can take and put a survey in place because we need that survey in order to get any grant money from the Disability Commission at the state level. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
So we hope that we'll be able to, when we move forward with that survey, that we'll be able to get a grant for that. There are a number of grants that we can get for that, George, and we anticipate applying for that.
Well, we had a member from the Disability Commission say that you, the town of Littleton, has to do the survey before you can qualify to submit. They need that survey in hand before they'll give you any grant money.
And that's our goal, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're now ready for a vote on the three line items that were held during the discussion of Article 4, so we're now going to conduct another vote. And remember, it'll be a 30-second voting period, and the last vote is the one that counts. And that's the end of voting. And there were 402 votes cast, 374 in favor, 28 opposed, and the line items pass, and Article 4 passes in its entirety. Thank you very much. You may have noticed that our countdown clock goes from 0 to 30. We haven't figured out how to make a countdown from 30 to 0 yet, but 30 seconds is 30 seconds, right? So it's our first night, so. All right. Because of the consent agenda, Articles 5, 6, and 7 have already been passed, so this brings us now to Article 8, the proposed purchase of the Webster property. And the motion for Article 8, there's a new motion. It's on the green handout that you picked up at the door. Some things have changed since the book went to print a month or so ago. And I'm just going to say, we'll put the motion on the floor and then there'll be a presentation from Mr. Chase Gerbig of the Conservation Commission, moved and seconded by the Community Preservation Committee, that the town vote to take the following actions as printed in the town meeting amendment update sheet from May 7, 2024. Thank you very much. I recognize Mr. Gerbig.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the Webster property, understanding that tonight has the potential to go long. I'm going to try very hard to keep it as brief as I can, and also understanding that we've been here to talk about this property in the past. So we can flip to the next slide here. What I'm showing you here is the location of the Webster property. It's about a mile away from the train station. I note the locations of the properties that we're going to talk about later tonight as a subject of Article Thirteen. And if you want to move forward to the next slide, this is the thirty-six and a half acre Webster property. And I could wax poetic all night about the significance of this property from a conservation perspective, from an ecological perspective, from a recreational perspective. I think it's sufficient to say here, though, that the Conservation Commission unanimously supported this article, the CPC, or CPC fully supported this article unanimously, Finance Committee unanimously supported it, and the Select Board unanimously supported it. And therein represents all of the elements of the value here that if you have questions about what we see sort of the endpoint of this, happy to answer them, but I think what we'll do is move forward from this and talk about, let's say, some of the trajectory. So if we flip forward to the next slide. The Conservation Commission was in front of this body in the fall to talk about the potential acquisition of the Webster property. At that time, the asking price was one point four million dollars. Note that that is not the asking price today, and we're going to get to that. That article ultimately failed, I think, for a couple of reasons, although barely it failed. And to be honest, perhaps with the exception of the Websters, we're back here and we're better for that. So if you want to flip to the, actually, let's skip one more slide so we can keep this moving. Here's what we're talking about tonight. So after it failed in the fall, there was a big disconnect between the price that the Websters were looking for and the appraisal price in the fall. One point four million dollar asking price, six hundred and thirty thousand dollar appraisal price. That was appraisal one. We worked with the Littleton Conservation Trust, who funded a second appraisal. Essentially, the idea here was to get a second opinion. Was appraisal one very, very low? Was it inappropriately low? If you recall, one of the challenges in the fall was that we couldn't use CPC money because we were proposing to pay for it above the appraised price. Well, we went out and got appraisal two, and when I say we, I mean the town and the Conservation Trust, independent of the Websters. And that second appraisal came in a bit higher, seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars, but this is sort of your second opinion number. And what that told both us and the Websters is that the town's appraisal wasn't going to move that much, right? We're in the right ballpark. So what we're talking about here tonight is the acquisition of the Webster land for seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars. The article reads for seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars because there are additional, what we would call soft costs, costs associated with surveying, recording, implementing a conservation restriction, et cetera. So CPC has voted in favor of funding acquisition of this article from monies on hand. To be clear, this is not, approving this does not raise your tax rate. This is spending money from our piggy bank, specifically from our piggy bank that was set aside for open space. This is from the CPC Open Space Reserve. So this is money that we've been planning to spend for a long time. I'll get the rough numbers out here, and if someone from CPC wants to fill in later with the specifics, CPC had about one point two five million dollars in open space reserve. We are proposing here, if this passes, to spend that down, but not exhaust it. There would be about a half a million dollars left. And my read of CPC's perspective there was that that still leaves a decent amount in the piggy bank that will then go up over time as we fund it with CPC funds to allow us the opportunity should other land come, become available. So actually, if we can go back to that slide, so, yeah, let's keep it here for one second. So we are asking for funding to pay for this at the appraisal price, which allows CPC funding to be utilized. It is not a borrowing article. There's a mistake up here. The article, the amendment that you have on the green sheet here was amended so that we could go forward and potentially apply for grants. The nature of the language changes the voting threshold. So up here, I say it's not a borrowing article, so we only need fifty percent. Turns out, I'm not a lawyer, and that is wrong. So Town Council has advised us that this is a two-thirds article. It's got to pass by two-thirds, and we can get into the nuance of that if you're interested, but that's essentially where we're at. So with that, if we want to flip to the next slide, this is the extent of the property. Essentially, at the endpoint of this, we would be looking to utilize the property for open space purposes, passive recreation purposes, and it's got a lot of broad impacts. Again, I don't want to belabor this too much. What I would like to do is let's flip forward to the slide that says, Common Questions. Okay, question number one, why do you have all this different language in here? That language is to allow us to potentially apply for grants. I'm going to tell you that do not take that for granted, right? We, there are various hoops we have to go through. There's no certainty that the grants would fund it. The grant we are targeting is what's called a reimbursement grant. We've got to vote to fund the full amount in any case. So understand that it's a possibility. We're trying to spend your money as wisely as we can, but grants are not a guarantee here in any, by any means. If we were to get a grant, we would expect it to be in the ballpark of about a half a million dollars. A couple of questions about the appraisal. Why did we get the second appraisal, and what are the differences? These really come down to it's a second opinion. I will tell you that the second appraisal that came in at seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars used slightly different methods. It's also a year later, so as we all know, property values go up over time. I will tell you from our perspective, those are functionally the same number. We think there's a lot of validity to the seven hundred and thirty thousand dollar number that was appraised here. It's not that different from the six thirty number. We think this is a valid and reasonable price. The last question is, and perhaps the Websters may choose to speak to this, why are the Websters taking a bath on this? If they've got someone who's potentially willing to spend, to pay them over a million dollars for this property, why are they willing to sell it to the town? And the answer that we've been given is legacy. This property has been, the Historical Commission has looked at it and characterized it as historically significant, dating all the way back to the Nishoba-praying Indians. Two Littleton families have owned this land in the sort of post-colonial period. So there's a significant legacy component of this. And I will tell you that it is not, I would say it's rare, but it's not outside of what we're accustomed to. Other people in town have made similar choices. Joyce Williams made the same choice as well, to sell to the town for less money than she could have sold it for her property in the open market. And frankly, we're better off for it. So I will yield the rest of my time, and really just, certainly, there's a lot of things I didn't cover here, so please ask questions, happy to go deeper on things.
Okay, thank you. Okay, before we hear the comments from boards and the general public, I might ask if our Town Council would give us a few words on why this article is a two-thirds vote, where we're not borrowing the funds any longer?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Tom Harrington, Town Council. So you'll note in paragraph one of the article that it authorizes the Select Board to acquire by eminent domain or negotiated purchase or otherwise. So I've asked that the eminent domain language goes into this article, and when we use the eminent domain language, the vote becomes a two-thirds vote. I've asked that the town do so because one of the tools Littleton uses when acquiring property is what we call a friendly taking, so that we'll agree on a purchase price, but then we'll acquire the property by eminent domain. Eminent domain gives the benefit of clearing the title. So when acquiring property, you may all know that we do title searches, and sometimes there's what we called clouds on the title, and you either need to insure against them or you need to clear them. When we use our eminent domain tool, it automatically clears any cloud on the title. So this ensures that we're getting the cleanest title we can get. And so that's why I've asked that it be put in there.
Okay. Thank you. Any boards or committees like to weigh in at this point, Select Board and/or Finance Committee, or you want to hear from the public first, or, yes, Mr. Vanoudie?
Fred Faulkner, I'm the vice chair, and I got elected to this article. As you recall, in November, the Finance Committee spoke basically against the article because we were unable to use CPC funds. And for those of you who have been around for a while, in two thousand and seven, the town voted to a one percent surcharge on all of your real estate taxes, all of our real estate taxes. We've been paying into that for the past seventeen years. We've purchased land using these funds, and to be consistent, we felt that the prudent thing to do was to stay with that practice. This property now, the CPC is funding it, and we voted unanimously tonight to stay with that policy and support this article. I think everybody should vote their conscience, but that's what the Finance Committee voted.
Okay, thank you. Okay, yes, sir?
Sure. My name is David Sullivan, ninety-one Nagog Hill Road. I'm just curious, from a conservation perspective, why is it important to purchase this thirty-odd acres of land but sell forty-odd acres of land to the Orchard?
Yes, Mr. Gerbig?
I think that's an excellent question. What I'd like to do is differentiate how conservation land is used from land that's got an APR, an agricultural restriction on it. So this land would be utilized in the same fashion as some of our other conservation lands, Oak Hill, or Yap, or so on. And what we've seen from a conservation land perspective is that the town has the resources necessary to adequately manage that to the benefit of the community. So that means sometimes partnering with the Conservation Trust, but it means establishing boardwalks, it means building kiosks, it means maintaining trails, et cetera. The contrast between conservation land and the ag land at the Orchard is that the ag land at the Orchard needs to be under agricultural use. That's a very different sort of ultimate endpoint and end game with that. And so I think what you're looking at is the contrast between towns, the land, or land the town has shown they're capable of managing effectively, conservation lands for passive recreational purposes, in contrast with some of the ag land issues associated with the Orchard. Very different sort of paradigms there, very different levels of effort, very different levels of expertise, and frankly, very different levels of money involved in doing one versus the other.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
George Sanders, six seventy-two Great Road. Mr. Moderator, for one, we know you can't grow land. And two, when we have the opportunity, as we have now here tonight, to purchase this land with funding that is already available, and you're not asking to increase other taxes, I think that's a plus for us here tonight, that we can acquire. And the fact that the Webster property, they wanted the town to have it, which is another reason that I think is a golden opportunity. And lastly, I would say, we need to thank them for wanting to sell it to the town at a less price than they could get for if they sold it to a developer and they started building housing on the dry land over there. We want to keep the character of the town of Littleton to be ruled, and if we do that, it's taking property like this here and purchasing it with money that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Mr. Moderator, William Reese, two A Matthew Drive. I opposed this purchase at the last town meeting. I do support it today. I just want to remind everybody that the town came very, very close at the last town meeting to vastly overpaying for this property. It was a close two-thirds vote. Every vote counts, and I want to remind my fellow citizens of Littleton that being here and voting makes a difference. In this case, I think about a six hundred thousand dollar difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Hi, I'm Joanne Derry from Howard Avenue, and I'm here to speak for the Littleton Conservation Trust. Last fall, this body was in favor of preserving this parcel, but they had an issue with financing on three fronts. The price exceeded the valuation, and that's no longer true. The purchase at that time was not eligible for CPC funding, and that's no longer the case. And the purchase would have required borrowing, and that's no longer the case. Everyone involved, the Websters, the Conservation Commission, the Community Preservation Commission, the Littleton Conservation Trust, we have all taken public input and addressed every issue to get this parcel back before town meeting in an easy-to-understand transaction that will have no impact on your property taxes except to keep them down by not adding the need for any additional services. So every box has been checked. The land is just as valuable now for ecology and conservation. Its location between highways means it's already a preserve amidst development. Its proximity to the box for a wildlife management area enhances the wildlife value of both areas. The town's rural and suburbanity character won't be impacted by putting an apartment complex in the middle of this neighborhood. And the presence of indigenous ceremonial stones can now be preserved forever if we vote for this tonight. So the trust wanted to say thank you to everyone who had a hand in presenting this opportunity to the voters tonight, no matter how small. But most importantly, we wanted to say thank you to the Websters for their dedication to conservation. The conservationists among us owe you a great debt of gratitude. The Littleton Conservation Trust unanimously supports passage of this article, and we urge all of you to vote for it as well.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Jared Elpeyore, New Estate Road. She, the previous speaker, pretty much spoke most of my sentiments, but it isn't very often you get a second chance. And this is probably one of those once-in-a-lifetime where you can get a fantastic piece of land with unique archaeological sites at a price the town can afford, and I want to thank everybody, and especially the Websters, for allowing this to happen. Please support the article.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Lyle Webster, thirty-three Buckley Road. Happy and grateful for everyone for getting us to this point this evening. Through the moderator, I would just have a question to our Town Council. Two families have owned this property since seventeen hundred, including Gretchen, and I just bought it June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-two. The title's pretty clear. Would you explain your wisdom, please?
Counsel?
Through you, Mr. Moderator, to the previous speaker. So that's encouraging, and so that ticks one box. There are several boxes to tick when searching a title. There's abutting property owners, and have they honored the line that was set so many years ago? And the answer to that is I don't know. It, so I guess I'm, I try to be conservative in offering advice to the town of Littleton. I think this could proceed without eminent domain, but it's my desire that we work to get the eminent domain so that I can ensure I deliver the best title to the town that I can.
Thank you for your explanation.
Thank you. Okay. Yes?
I'm Leah Alfobbaum, ninety-two Foster Street. I think I went to school with your brother. Anyhow, I'm very excited to see this topic come back up in this way. I also am impressed by the process the town has been through, the Conservation Commissions and the people of Littleton. And as an environmental educator, I want to say that the importance of preserving land like this for future generations is unbelievable. Yes, we need public housing, we need. Yes, we need public housing, we need senior housing, but it can be done in other places that doesn't have to take away from this kind of rich place of biodiversity and corridors for wildlife and for the beauty of this town and for the history, both of the indigenous people and the farming history. So I'm strongly in favor of this and really appreciate where it's come to. It sounds amazing. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you. Yes?
Anita Harding, Russell Street. If we look at the green sheet, I would just like to know what the selectmen's recommendation is. It says at the very bottom, finance and selectmen will make their recommendation on town meeting floor. I believe FinCom has, but I don't think the selectmen have.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Select Board?
Sure, I'll speak to the, um, Select Board voted previous to this meeting unanimously to support the article. Our concerns, a majority of the board's concerns earlier in the November special town meeting have been cleared. It's a beautiful piece of property. It'll continue to be a beautiful piece of property, the Webster Conservation Land. So I believe our board, we'd all get up here and say the same thing. We truly believe that the property should be owned by the town of Littleton so that we can enjoy it for generations to come.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Hi, my name is Ananda Alfobbaum. I'm Maya's sister, and she took me to this property, and I was completely amazed by it. It is so beautiful and so amazing that this exists in Littleton. I hope all of you can go there. I hope it's preserved, and I would vote yes on this Webster property as a gem. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I don't, I don't see anyone at the microphone, and I think we had seven or eight comments in favor in a row, so I don't sense a long line of people wishing to speak in opposition, so we'll move to a vote. This will be the motion under Article 8, as printed on your amendment update sheet for this evening in green for Article 8. Oh, we've got the text on the, on the board. So I'm going to declare the voting open in a moment, and you'll have 30 seconds to make your choice, starting now. 449 votes cast. Now, could I, could I just see the total one more time? Could, no. Can we get that slide up one more time, please, for Diane? You've got it. Diane, you've got it. Okay, I've got it too. 449 votes cast, 403 in favor, 46 opposed. It passes by the necessary two-thirds margin, and I declare the vote. Thank you very much. Okay, you can applaud. All right, we're going to next move because Article 9 was on the consent agenda. We're going to move to Article 10, but before we do that, it occurs to me that I've been remiss in one way, that I failed to introduce our new town administrator, James Duggan, tonight. Would you stand up, Jim? So, welcome to Littleton. Welcome to Littleton, Jim, and I apologize for not doing that earlier. You'd think as a former town administrator, I'd be more sensitive to things like that, but apparently not. All right, we'll get, we're going to get to Article 10 now, which is the fiscal year 2025 Community Preservation Budget. Again, you'll find that the revised substitute motion is on the green sheet. So moved and seconded by the Community Preservation Committee, that the town votes as follows. And what follows is exactly what is printed in your handout, update handout this evening. So I recognize the Chair of the CPC, Carolyn Mueller.
80 Strubbsbury Drive, a member of the Community Preservation Committee. The first slide, please. This article actually accomplishes five separate things, so we'll just go from the top to the bottom, as the moderator said, through the article as written. The first part of the article is kind of threefold. It will, the Community Preservation Committee is required to allocate the 1% surcharge that we contribute through our property taxes. We also have to allocate the estimated state match, which will come through in November. So the 1% surcharge is our allocation for property tax in fiscal year 25, and the state match is what is based on revenue collected in fiscal year 24. When the committee votes in those allocations, we don't have the dollar figure, so we vote based on a percentage, which is sometimes a little easier to wrap your head around. On the slide here, we have, what we've done this year is we've actually taken the 1% surcharge and the state match and applied a different allocation, just so that we can manage some of the money. So on the far left are the buckets that we have, open space, historic, community housing, recreation administrative, and then the undesignated reserve. So for the 1% surcharge, we're taking 40% of the revenue for open space, 18% for historic reserve, 20% for the community housing, 21% for recreation, 1% for the administration. And the Finance Team has given us a figure of 485, 199 as the estimated surcharge for next year. On the right is the estimated state match, which is, we did a little differently. 30% will go to open space, 15% to the historic reserve, community housing, and recreation reserve, and then we're putting 25% into that undesignated bucket, which gives us a little more flexibility because that can be used for any projects. And any back taxes, tax liens, any miscellaneous funds go into that undesignated reserve, so it does grow faster than the 25% that we've put in there. The next slide. We also have some debt service on projects that we have bonded in the past. The Yap Lucy's Land Conservation Area, you'll see $5,100 is due this year. The Cobb Property, $19,200. The Williams Land is $34,800. The Houghton Building Roof, which will come from the historic bucket, is $11,250. And then the tennis courts that we voted on at the last meeting, Recreation, that's in anticipation of purchases the coming year. So those three items are wrapped up into the numbers that you see in the first part of that. Next slide. We had a record number of projects this year, so a little bit too long to go through them all, but the applicants are willing to answer any specific questions on them. We had two historic, historic resource projects for historic markers and plaque replacements around town, and then another phase of gravestone preservation. Those are both from the Historical Commission, and the Cemetery Commission was a co-applicant on the gravestone preservation. We have five open space projects, mostly around invasive control, one at Cloverdale. The Clean Lakes have three for eco-harvesting in Long Lake, some more harvesting of floating islands in Long Lake, and then harvesting water chestnut invasives at Dolphopon, which is on the Newtown Hill Conservation Land. Also, the second line down is Land Acquisition and Preservation Support Fund. There are two types of funds allowable under CPA. One is the Land Acquisition and Preservation for Conservation, and one is the Affordable Housing Trust. So this is new for us this year, and many, many towns around us use the same support fund. We have three recreation projects, a new boat launch, recreating, replacing the boat launch at Mill Pond. That's also a Clean Lakes Committee project. 300 King Basketball Court Reservicing, and the Long Lake Dock Replacement come from Park Rec and Continuing, Community Education. And then finally, the Affordable Housing Trust Rental Assistance is one of their programs, and that's coming from the Affordable Housing Trust. And the following, next article. We have three projects that are complete or not started, and there is money that is sitting there that we can put back into the buckets that they originally came from. One was voted at May 2018 Annual Town Meeting for recreational housing service. We ended up doing the funding differently for that, and we haven't funded that since, so that money was just sitting there. It's going back to housing. The Wellington Cooper Trail, this was back when Joe Layden was our Assistant Town Administrator. He and the Recreation Department put that together. That never got off the ground, and so if it does, it will come back as a new project, so we're going to cancel that project and the unspent amount will go back to recreation. And then finally, one of the 2021 boardwalk projects for Cloverdale and Town Forest is complete. All bills have been paid, and there was an unspent amount of $5,060, which Conservation has agreed should go back into the bucket for future use. So that's the article. Like I say, it's all kind of combined together, but those are the details. And again, any specific questions, we'll have the applicants come up for.
Great, thank you. Any boards or committees that wish to speak to Article 10? Yes, Select Board?
I would just like to say that Select Board, FinCom, and CPC all voted prior to this meeting unanimously to support this article.
I think we can move to a vote. I don't see, I see someone running to the microphone now, so, okay.
Jared Elpior, a quick question. I see there's $9,000 plus for gravestone preservation at West Lawn. Isn't there a perpetual care fund to cover that? And a follow-on to that are, a few years ago, I walked through the old burying ground in the center of town, and it looked like some of those stones definitely need some work. So is there a project planned to do repair work out at that site?
Thank you. I don't know. Do we, we can respond to that question? Or, yes, okay. Carolyn, yes?
Thank you, if I remember. Yeah, the first one, the old burying ground, we did do three rounds earlier, and then we moved to West Lawn the last few years because that is, some of those stones are as old, and we were trying to do a balance, so we probably will go back to the old burying ground at some point. And, oh, the perpetual care fund, yes, and that's for grounds maintenance. These are real specific projects. We had an assessment done, and then they're, they do cleaning and repair of the stones, and we hire an outside firm who's experts at this, and so that the perpetual care fund is more for routine maintenance within the cemetery and plantings for the graves.
All right, thank you. Yes?
Joanne Deary from Harvard Avenue. I know Littleton sets aside 1% of the property tax revenue for CPC funds, and I think I've heard that one, a town can vote to set aside more, like 2% or maybe even 3%. And I'm just wondering, does the CPC know what percent nearby towns set aside, like Westford and Acton and Boxborough? How much? Do we have any idea if those towns are also setting aside 1% or are they doing a different set aside?
Okay, thank you. If we have an answer, yes?
I should know this question. There are towns around us that are higher, but not many. The majority of towns in cities in Massachusetts that have adopted CPA are 1%. Of course, a lot of them get more money because they have more tax revenue coming in. I know, you know, Westford gets a lot more than we do because they have the commercial tax. I can't think off the top of my head, I'm sorry, I don't have the, that was last year.
Okay, yes, Finance Committee. Article 9, which was on the consent agenda, I just want to call people's attention to it. The town has actually contributed $87,000 additional into the CPA fund from within the levy limit. So we are putting actually more than 1% into that bucket for this year, and we intend to do that each and every year. Thank you. Yes, sir?
Oh, yes, Andrew Smarco Goldsmith, Street. I was just going to point out that Harvard is a 3% community.
Okay. Thank you. I think we're ready to move to vote. So all those in favor of the motion as read and as printed under Article 10 on tonight's amendment update sheet, please signify in the next 30 seconds by indicating a yes vote, those oppose a no vote, starting now. All right, that's to close the voting period. 423 ballots cast, 400 in favor, 23 opposed. The article passes. I declare the vote. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move forward to Article 11, which is a vote to declare Nagog Hill Orchard a surplus property and authorize the Select Board to sell the Nagog Hill Orchard. It's been moved and seconded by the Nagog Hill Orchard Ad Hoc Working Group and the Select Board that the town vote to approve Article 11 as printed in the warrant. So that's as printed in your town meeting report, verbatim. And I'm going to recognize Select Board Member Nordhouse for the presentation.
Hello. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening. I'm Matthew Nordhouse. I'm one of the Select Board Members on the Nagog Hill Orchard Working Group, and I'm going to provide some information about this warrant article. Next slide, thank you. Could you go to the next one? The current membership of the Orchard Working Group has been meeting regularly for the last year. It's a diverse and highly qualified group with tons of relevant experience. Collectively, we've spent hundreds of hours meeting, researching the property, the town's options, and seeking input from residents. We agree that the warrant article in front of you tonight is the best outcome for the orchard and the town. The orchard is a historical cornerstone of Littleton. In addition to being the last operational orchard in town, it was part of the Nishoba Plantation before Littleton was even incorporated. The cultural significance of this land to the town and to the Nishoba-praying Indians can't be understated. When the Morrison family sold it to the town, they asked that it continue to be used for agriculture, and we are committed to honoring that legacy. The orchard was purchased in 1999 with a combination of a borrowing article, grants, and money from the state's Agricultural Preservation Restriction Program. The entire property is roughly 129 acres, 48 of which are protected by an agricultural preservation restriction, an APR. Tonight's warrant article covers only the 48 acres covered by the APR. The town will retain ownership of the rest of the property. You can see on this slide the difference between the original purchase price of nearly $3 million and the current appraised value of less than $1 million. That difference is due to the value of the development rights, which the town purchased. The town purchased them so that no future owner will have the right to develop the property. The town owns the rights, and it can The town owns the rights, and it can never be developed and must remain in agriculture forever. So after the last tenant left, the working group released, um, three requests for proposals to find parties that were interested in the land. These three RFPs offered a lease of the property. From all three of these, the town got a total of one qualified response, and that applicant ultimately walked away. Um, this year, we regrouped, and in order to figure out the best way forward, we released a request for information, which is a non-binding way to find out who might be interested in the property and what sort of terms they would like. The next slide, please. We got fifteen responses to our RFI. There was a wide variety of approaches in the proposed responses. They, they, um, included commercial and nonprofit applicants, as well as cooperative proposals and community-based organizations. Most of the plans included multiple diverse agricultural uses of the property, such as vegetable farming, animals, fruit, horticulture, and other types of farming. It's important to note that all of the potentially most qualified applicants were interested in purchase, not lease. This makes sense from the farmer's point of view. Running a farm requires a huge investment in time and money. If you don't own the land, you, why would you invest all of that? You would walk away at the end of your thirty-year lease with nothing. Next slide. The warrant article tonight covers the roughly forty-eight acres which are protected by the APR, which is the dark gray area on that map. The working group is in the process of adding protection to two small parcels that were not part of the original APR. We have a commitment from the Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources to add the upper barn to the APR, and we are working with the Littleton Historical Commission to put a historical preservation on the house to protect it. Tonight's article allows the Select Board to designate the forty-eight articles as surplus to issue an RFP and to negotiate a sale. Um, so we've been asked about a million questions since we started the process. I would like to address some of the most common ones before we debate this article. The first one. Next slide. Can the APR be removed? An APR is a legal binding contract between a landowner and the state. Even if ownership is transferred, the APR is forever. It requires that the land be used for agriculture. Yes, in theory, an APR can be removed, but the working group is not aware of a single case where an APR has been removed in its entirety. The process for removal is slow, very expensive, and very rare. The Mass Department of Agricultural Resources would review the transfer, and they are notoriously conservative about any changes to any APR. There are additionally watershed protection issues, given the orchard's proximity to the reservoir. Then there would have to be a land swap, which is a new requirement from the state. In this case, forty-eight acres of prime agricultural land in Littleton would need to be permanently protected. And finally, the last step is a two-thirds vote of both houses of the Mass State Legislature. So, yes, it could happen, but it has never happened in Massachusetts with a parcel of this size and of this agricultural significance. Next slide. Can we retain ownership and lease the orchard? Well, this is exactly what we have been trying to do for the last several years. We've been without a tenant for three years, and there was very little maintenance done on the farm for several years prior to that. Farmers don't want to lease it because they have to put everything they have into it, and in the end, they would walk away with no equity, with nothing. So what if we kept the orchard and hired people to take care of it? If we retain ownership, not only would we be asking the taxpayers to cover a large upfront expense to fix the place up, we would also require a significant annual cost to operate. This cost is higher for municipalities because we're required to pay more for labor and materials than a private entity. And if we do commit to running the farm, that money can never be stricken from the budget. It's only practical to expect that annual costs would increase year to year. Mother Nature is in charge of that, not the Select Board. People have pointed out that other towns have owned farms, and those are models for what we might follow. Those farms are already in working order, and they still require subsidies or large private investments to pay the bills. As an example, Sholen Farm in Lemonster is a fully productive, well-maintained farm. They have a highly successful nonprofit fundraising apparatus and a huge, well-trained volunteer corps already in place. It likely took them decades to get to that point. Still, in twenty nineteen, it cost them two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to run the army, sorry, to run the farm with an army of free labor, and they still lost money. So if we want to retain ownership, we should be prepared to operate the orchard at a deficit of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year minimum for as long as it takes. Uh, we have heard your request to include more residents in the process, and so here is what we're doing. The Select Board and the Orchard Working Group both have approved a memorandum of understanding that says essentially the following. Um, we would add two additional members to the working group, two public-at-large members. We will hold public hearings to get input from all residents about how to qualify the applicants. The Orchard Working Group and the Select Board will jointly hold open public meetings to review applicant, applicants, and ultimately approve the winning proposal. And finally, the Select Board has agreed to follow the recommendation of the Orchard Working Group for its final approval. So what happens if we don't pass it tonight? If the vote doesn't pass, the Orchard Working Group won't be able to issue an RFP at least until Fall Town Meeting. That means the orchard will likely remain unused again next year for the twenty-twenty-five growing season. This will cost us money. Apart from mowing and minimal upkeep, the land and the buildings have not been used in several years now, and they are deteriorating. We've done what we could with very little money for the last three years, and we are approaching the point where significant repairs need to be made. The working group's best estimate for the continued bare minimum cost for the upcoming year is between one hundred and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. All the deferred maintenance is eventually going to come home, and an emergency or a large repair will be very expensive. Next slide. So my summary. The town, as the owner of the orchard, has not preserved the agricultural value of this farm. Despite our best efforts, we can't find someone to lease it. A new owner can turn the Morrison Orchard back into the farm that it's meant to be. It makes financial sense to the taxpayers, and it protects a cornerstone of Littleton's cultural and agricultural heritage. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, before we open it up, uh, to the floor, any boards or committees that would like to weigh in? Okay. Yes, sir. Hear from you.
Ed Foltz, Newtown Road. I am really, really angry. I hope many more people are angry. We bought this property to protect it. We did not buy it for the selectmen to say, oh, we need more money. Let's make a surplus. We'll take that money and put it in our budget, or whatever the blink you're planning to do with that money. This property is the town's property. It's a valuable piece of land, and I don't think the selectmen or any of the other boards have done right by this project. And now we're being told, we don't have a choice. We have to sell it. It's going to be taken from us if we don't. There's no other alternatives, no agriculture we can come up with. We have to do the trees. Well, I'm here to tell you that this is wrong, and how can I possibly trust any more open space or other protected lands under your control? Because you're just going to eventually sell it. You know, surplus. This is not surplus property, and it's far from it. So, and the buildings being, falling apart is just like the town has handled, the selectmen have handled other buildings, the school buildings and so forth. You don't maintain things, they're going to fall apart. The house, I understood, got a water leak or a burst pipe. Did anyone even think about trying to fix it? No, so now it's all moldy. It's going to have to be gutted. This property is not surplus. Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Steve Byan, twelve Oak Ridge Road. Uh, I'm just curious about the, the process. Uh, I see that, uh, it requires a vote at the town meeting to issue an RCP. Is there any reason we couldn't also structure it so that after there are responses to the RCPs or, or RFPs are, are received, that the town could then vote with respect to who the buyer is to actually consummate the sale? Is there a reason we have to do that now instead of, you know, once we see what actually evolves in terms of, uh, people coming forward to try and make use of the property?
Okay, good question. Counsel?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Through you to the previous speaker. So procurement law, procurement laws in Massachusetts require that before you put a project out, you need to have the ability to put the project out. In my opinion, if we're, if we're saying that we don't have a project, but we still want your bids, and then town meeting will decide, uh, in the future whether or not we'll grant this project, that's not a legitimate project, and we, we would be violating procurement laws by putting it out on the street. You need to authorize someone to do the project that you're seeking bids for. Otherwise, it's just not fair to the bidding public.
Okay. Thank you.
Could be a pig in the poke.
Okay. Yes, sir.
George San, six seventy-two Great Road. Mr. Moderator. I came here in nineteen ninety-seven, so this happened two years after I came in town here. Not that familiar with, uh, the past history, but what the town had promised, uh, the seller that they was going to do. But there's been a lot of talk about this property, and I think that, uh, a lot of people may not know, there's talk out there about, you know, why are we selling it? Have we did everything possible that we could do to sell, uh, to, uh, keep this property? Uh, I don't know the answer to that, but, uh, there's an old saying, lawyers usually say that if it doesn't meet the smell test, it ain't right. But, uh, I want to say to you that, um, with regards to this, uh, property, especially the house there, if you, uh, don't put someone in it, it's going to continue to deteriorate. And if it's at the point that there's mold in it, uh, I would suggest, if you're going to add to the APR, uh, that spot of land there with the house, I would say tear the house down. Because I think if there's no significance to it, why are we putting money in it for it to sit there and it not be used, or we get any return from it by fixing it up? That just doesn't make sense. You don't throw good money against a bad situation. And it seems that that house is a bad situation for the town, and of course, the town is not a landlord, so they don't know much about the Select Board, about, you know, maintaining, keeping this and the monies that's needed to do it and so forth and so on. So if you're going to keep that piece of property, the house there, you're going to have to invest in it. And if you invest in it, there should be some return to it if you rent it out or whatever the case is, because I don't see us putting money into it just to fix it up to meet the criteria of having this. But I do know one thing, that if we don't do what we're supposed to do, I can almost assure you that the state is going to step in somewhere along the line, because we are fortunate that, uh, they haven't stepped in already and said something to us. So we need to take this to heart. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Yes.
Hi, I'm Jill Brown, thirty-two Beaverbrook Road. I'm actually here for my husband, John Mitchell, who many of you may know, is a historian and writer about Littleton, among other things. He couldn't be here tonight, and he asked me to read this letter to you. He wrote a letter to the board. This is going to be an abbreviated version of it.
Okay.
So he says, "I was part of the group that worked to save the Sarah Dubblett Forest years ago, and I remember the vote for preservation of the land, including the orchard, by the people of Littleton, was overwhelming." It was something like three hundred and thirty-two, six or seven at the time. "That landslide victory came to pass because of the unique traditional landscape that characterizes the land. Forested hills and an apple orchard that sweeps down to the open wood banks of Nagog Pond. This was the site of the Nishoba-praying Indians' village. I am concerned that privatization of this land may lead to a complete loss of that landscape. I have suggested that the cheapest and easiest way to keep the orchard as public land would be to do nothing, just let the land go wild. I have been told that that would not work because the land has to be used for agriculture. That, however, brings us to the question of what is agriculture? In Europe, especially in the UK and Holland, the new thinking on ways to slow down the loss of natural environments and local wildlife is to let some farmlands return to their natural state. That system is known as regenerative agriculture. In both England and Holland, as a result of practicing regenerative agriculture, local wildlife, including species that were thought to be extinct, have come back. This system of agriculture could be used here with the orchard. Old apple orchards are extremely ecologically rich habitats. They give us much sought-after morrel mushrooms and a variety of popular bird species, some of which are becoming very rare. The town should at least consider the above solution. Among other advantages, it's free."
Thank you. Yeah, I'm sorry. Was it? Was there? It didn't ask a question, did it? I mean. Yeah, yes, you may, you may respond to that.
Very briefly, um, I would love to have the orchard be wild, be a wild place, but Massachusetts Department of Agriculture doesn't recognize wilderness as an approved agricultural use. The land is protected under an APR, which is very specific about what it can and can't be used for. At least half of the acreage must be in active agricultural use. The penalty for that in the long term is that the Mass Department of Agricultural Resources could come in and assign a farmer to farm the land, in which case we lose control. I think that that is a, not a likely outcome. The longer that we delay, the longer that the land stays fallowed, the more likely that becomes. It has happened in the past in Massachusetts. So although that would be a very attractive option, and I think it would add a lot of value, it is unfortunately legally not possible at this time.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, Abraham Schultz, Berry Bush Road. I had a question about the budget that was available in those slides. Uh, listed at one point two million dollars to replace trees. Um, I'm not an apple farmer. Could you speak to what's wrong with the existing trees on the property?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Through you to the previous speaker. So there are several things. One, the first is that, that apple trees have a finite lifespan. Most of those trees were planted twenty or thirty years ago, and they are at the end of their useful life. Although they are still producing apples, they don't produce the yield that would be necessary to make them commercially viable. The second thing is that a lot of them have diseases such as fire blight, and they would need to be replaced. And the final thing is that trees of the shape and form that you see at that orchard are no longer used in commercial agriculture. These days, you have dwarf varieties which are much more efficient to pick. You don't need to have ladders and go around, and the labor costs for, for actually using that orchard to produce fruit would be astronomical, and it wouldn't be a viable, um, going concern. And that is one of the reasons why that orchard is no longer a commercial orchard. So we, we have had several, um, agricultural experts, orchetists from, uh, University of Massachusetts come out to view, and their opinion was that the trees are no longer viable. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Yes.
My name is Maura Keeler, seventy-five Edsel Road. I would like to just say that the orchard, it just got breezed over that it's the only orchard in Littleton still. I think that's a really significant thing. When you look up Littleton, Massachusetts, what it's known for, it's orchards and farms. It's the last one, and once it's sold privately, we lose it forever. There's been a lot of talk about, we get to pick the first owner, the first person. It's a big, you know, there's been a big, big emphasis on that, but after that first owner, what about the second and third and fourth owner over time? This orchard's been around since the sixteen hundreds. It's the, I think it's the longest working orchard, except for maybe COVID, in the country or in the state. It's, it's really significant. It's Native American land, and there's been also a lot of talk about the APR, that it can't, it can maybe, it can, probably won't be undone ever. But if you look around, things have all gotten developed. There are no orchards. There are very few farms. If someone come, after it's sold and it's private, if somebody If someone come, after it's sold and it's private, if somebody comes in with a lot of money and a lot of good lawyers, you know, it'll change. Things change. We're in a very rapidly changing time that we live in. Things, laws change, major things change all the time, and its development is, is going and going and going. When I first lived in Littleton, it was very rural, and everybody bemoans the fact that it isn't. I just think that orchard is a beautiful historic thing that just is, is, it's our, it's our crowning jewel of our town. And to, and to just dispose of it, because it will cost us some money to, to do something with it, I mean, let's try. I feel like people are, I've talked to so many people in the last few weeks. Everybody's saying like, why are we selling our orchard? Like, what is up with that? That, that makes no sense. So I, I just also feel like so many people have fond memories of that place, and it's, it's just so dear to so many people that our children and our children's children should be able to go there and see it as an orchard, and we should fight for it. We should just fight for it. We should all get together. The Orchard Working Groups worked really hard. I, I think their direction is incorrect, to put it mildly, but, you know, I have respect for them. They've really tried, but I think that something else could be done. And Sholon Farms is a good example. There's another place in Harvard. I forget the name of it at the moment, I'm a little nervous, but, you know, they, they've done it too. And if other towns around us can do it, why can't we do it? It's not that much money. It's a tenth of the cost of the senior center and the senior center and the library budget. I mean, and it's a one-time cost to fix it up, and then after that, it's a budget item. I understand that, but it's not that much money, considering how important it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Jared Delbiore, again. Several questions. First of all, is there any way under state law to convert an APR into conservation land? And secondly, given, as the previous speaker said, laws change with time, can the town retain certain development rights? So if the state decides there's too much of a housing crunch, and, oh, we're going to turn agricultural land into high-density housing, we can be protected? More to the point, I think the issue is, it's probably not economically viable to run this as an apple orchard. And if it gets sold, would the new operators restore it as an apple orchard? Or rip up the trees and, let's say, use it as a cornfield, a feedlot? It's better than nothing. I think ideally, if we could turn it into conservation land, retain it by the town, and let it go back to nature, I think that would be an outcome people would like.
Thank you. Counsel?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Through you to the previous speaker. So the first question I heard was, can we convert the APR into a conservation restriction? So it's, it is theoretically possible to do so. It would require votes of this body, of the Select Board, of Department of Agriculture, of both houses of the legislature, and the governor's signature. I think it highly unlikely that we would be able to achieve that result. Not impossible, but highly unlikely. Mr. Moderator, I'm, I'm not sure I remember the second question he asked.
I, I don't recall it myself.
Well, I, I think it was, how can we protect it against the state further changing laws? Can the town retain development rights on their own?
Not really. So again, you know, anything in the law is theoretically possible if the legislature and the governor agree with you. I suspect they wouldn't on that. In this instance, we've already given an agricultural preservation restriction to the state. To, there are no building rights to, to withhold, so I'm, I'm not sure we could pull that off.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Vera Spoor, Newtown Road. I feel that we should keep this property. We are losing a lot of property, a lot of space, to housing and to other things, some of which are completely necessary. But I think completely necessary is to keep this orchard, whether we keep it as an orchard or, as was suggested, as just open space for the town. It wouldn't take much money to fence it, or not fence it, to put up a few signs, and the Conservation Commission and others would help keep it decent. To try to put it back into an orchard is a big expense, and you haven't found people who want to do it. Why do we want to do it? Why don't we just keep this as beautiful open space, which is already owned by Littleton?
All right. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Peter Church. Whoa. Elmwood Road. I have a question and a comment. I know a little something about state government, working for state government. I know that public land gets lost to the two-third vote of the legislature, so we can't count on that all the time. My comment is, have we had direct discussions with MDR in terms of what we can do with that land so that we can keep it in the town? And then, that's my question. And I do not want to see the town lose that property, because I do think we lose control and something could happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Select Board Member, North House.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Through you to the previous speaker. Yes, we have had direct discussions with the Commissioner of MDR. In fact, the discussions around adding the upper barn to the APR is a verbal commitment from them, as a result of contacts that we have with them. The, the short answer is, they are very, very conservative as far as approaching APRs. They are very unlikely to change it in any respect, and their track record has borne that out. There have been, I'm only aware of two cases where any APR land was removed from an APR. In both cases, it was a single, one or two acres that was removed from a larger plot, and contiguous land was added. There has never been, as far as I can tell, and I've done a lot of research, there has never been an entire APR released back to, and, and given, like, the rights given back to anybody. So we have spoken to, yes, we have direct contact with MDR.
Just one final comment. This administration is very land protection friendly. They have a very aggressive land protection plan to purchase more land for the public welfare. And again, I think there, there is a way that we could do this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
Don MacIver, 43 Foster Street. I've been involved, I think, probably the last 35 years in the acquiring of about probably a dozen public conservation lands throughout this area. I'm, I'm surprised that there's a warrant article here saying, "This is your one and only time to vote," and this is the case. This is the only binding vote that we as a town have to decide what happens to this. It's not going to come back to us to approve or disapprove. I've been attending the meetings and, after it was recommended by Town Council to sell the land. So I've attended most of the meetings, except for one late Friday afternoon when the town was closed. It was the weekend where people were involved with the solar eclipse, so there weren't anyone around. It was a Zoom meeting. And that was a 15-minute video meeting where the committee, the Working Orchard Committee, which is doing a good job and making progress, were told, "This is the warrant article." So it could be printed the next business day and sent out. So there wasn't any real discussion, and there was surprise around that committee that it wouldn't be a two-step process. It wouldn't, you know, we hear that, oh, yeah, the town needs some authorization to go ahead and to do some work, but they were surprised it wouldn't come back for a town meeting vote here, just as we did for the Webster Land, both this time and last time, when it was disapproved. You know, you wouldn't buy a house and say, "Here's a blank check. You, you worry about the details, tell me later." And this is what it is. I mean, this is nothing negative about the people in the committee or the Select Board, but this is, yeah, there's no control. We lose complete control, not only of the area there, but of making a final decision. I do have an amendment, which may, may not be agreeable to Town Council, but essentially what it says, using their language, is that, and I'll give it to you, is that "The Select Board should not make any binding contract or commitment to offer for sale or execute, deliver grant or acquire deeds, restrictions, instruments, and agreements, nor effectuate the transfer of title of portions of the Morrison-Nagog Hill Orchard premises until it presents the full details of its proposed transaction and receives a two-third affirmative vote for that proposal by the town at a town meeting." And what it does is says, "Okay, if you want to sell it, this, this is the language you have. Go ahead, but bring back the results. We can vote yes or no, as we've done for every parcel, including the Morrison property." So I'm not sure how you go ahead with the amendment.
You're, you're out of time, Don. We'd asked that you put the amendment in writing.
I, I have. I've actually printed it, and it's slightly easier to read the print version.
Okay, if you'd bring that forward then, but you're, you're out of time for the strip to the microphone.
Okay.
Yep. Please bring that forward. Okay, all right. Okay, you've printed it out. Okay. Let me give that to Counsel. Okay, yes, sir.
So I think there's a lot of justified fear about the town losing control of what we're going to do with this parcel of land. I think what we're missing in that discussion is that the town hasn't had control of this land, except in a legal sense, for a decade, two decades. It, it's been deteriorating. It has been inadequately managed, and frankly, I, I say that as someone who sat up there and, and own a share of the inadequacy of the management. Town's got to know what we're good at and what we're not good at. And listen, I mean, I, I've been known to argue that we should pay twice the appraised price for a piece of conservation land, right? Like, I, I, I genuinely want to see us conserve property, but we can't conserve property and fail at it. And what we see here is a fundamental failure. We are not equipped to manage this land in a way that is consistent with the APR. It's not consistent with what the Morrisons entrusted us to do. And it's not consistent, frankly, with the fiscal responsibility elements that I, I think we need to think about. Steve, you'll make me swallow the fiscal responsibility later, I'm sure. But, but my point here is that an organization that can't keep track of its mission is bound to fail at everything it does. And owning this property and running this property as an active orchard is inconsistent with the town's mission. Listen, my, my head says we need to sell it. I desperately in my heart, I, I want to keep it, right? But it, it doesn't make sense, and, and we've seen interest in the orchard come and go over time. And I'm going to tell you that the likelihood of, everyone here right now wants to help, wants to preserve the orchard. I guarantee you in six months, if we say, "Hey, let's, let's go out and preserve the orchard," there's going to be 15 people, 10 people. And I know this because we do the same thing with conservation land. Now, conservation land requires, we can get a lot done with 10 or 15 people, right? But you can't do that on an orchard. So I, as much as my heart says I desperately want to conserve this land, I, I'm going to argue to town, meaning it's not the responsible choice here, both in terms of the ultimate agricultural endpoint, in terms of preserving what we've set as a goal of our town, right? To preserve agricultural character. But it's also not an, a positive endpoint for lots of, of other reasons. And, and for that reason, I, I'm going to vote with my head here and, and, and agree to allow the town to sell it.
Okay, thank you. If I could just interrupt, I don't see Don any, any longer, but Don MacIver, I'm going to rule your amendment out of order based upon Counsel's advice, and I'm going to prevail upon Counsel to explain that advice to, to the meeting and why this particular amendment would be out of order.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Through you to the previous, previous speaker. This essentially does what someone else already asked, and that is, take the, take the responsibility, responsibility of the sale out of the Select Board's hands and put it back into Town Meeting's hands. And my answer remains the same. If, if we don't have something to sell, the procurement laws of Massachusetts do not allow us to put a bid out for something. It's not fair to the bidding public. You actually have to have the ability to convey what you're asking them to bid on, and this would take that away.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Katie Caruth, Goldsmith Street. I just want to say, you know, whichever way this vote goes tonight, that I think that it took many, many years for this orchard to fall into decline. It wasn't like, it wasn't like we just woke up one day and it was, needed $2 million worth of work to bring it up to par. But, so it took a long time, and I also, I think of it as a project. We don't, we're not orchardists, but a town should be able to manage a project. And so my thought was, I think it is incredibly valuable, at this point, to stop, apart from this discussion, take a look at what went wrong and do some lessons learned, because with the structure we have, the people change, and, you know, so much depends on that, and perhaps we could consider that it's more than five people working part-time should be asked to manage. And if we've gotten to the size of town, that our population is over 10,000, maybe this orchard is an example of why we should perhaps consider a different form of government, I mean, not form of government, but a town manager position. Sorry, that was a tangent, but I just, I think it's, it's important to stop, it takes, take stock of what happened and can, and look at why it happened. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Can I, can, can I ask if there's anyone in the line that wants to speak in favor of the motion? We've had a number of people speaking in opposition. I just want to be fair to, okay, well, you're, you're next, sir. Okay. We'll hear from this young lady. Go ahead.
This is more of a statement. So essentially, my name is Tatiana Scott. I'm the owner of 165 New Estate, and essentially, I'm personally willing to deconstruct and rebuild the house structure on my property at New Estate Road, if that's ever a possibility. So essentially, just move the house itself to my property if it's ever available. I'm more than willing. I'm a big fan of old architecture. So that's me.
Okay, thank you. Okay, yes, sir.
Declan Reedy, Beaverbrook Road. I am speaking in favor of this motion. After hearing the presentation from the Select Board, as well as the comments of my fellow citizens, I am sympathetic to the sentimentality regarding this property, but it's also seems to me that we pretty clearly have two options here. Either we retain the land and allow it to deteriorate and decay further, just losing more of the town's money, or we can choose to sell it and recoup, you know, whatever cost was associated with that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes.
Hello, my name is Emily Wanzar. I live on Mill Road. I wanted to speak a bit to, hi. To, I guess, I'm feeling like this issue is being framed in kind of two oppositional ways. We're talking, we've been talking about conservation, we've also been talking about having it be a productive, working agricultural space. And I, it makes me think back to the origins of the place and the land itself, and how it was, it's been stewarded differently through time. And I guess my concern about selling it and emphasizing the kind of commercial agriculture aspect is that the character of the land and the, I guess, sorry, I'm a little bit all over the place, but I think, um, I'm going to take a second. Okay, I'm going to just go back to the trees, because that's what my main part, point was. And I'll invite everybody to look at the picture of the trees back there, and I guess my- my concern is if, I heard that the trees need to be removed because it's not how we do agriculture now. And I think it's just an opportunity to think about, to rethink the way that we are doing things now. And I think that the land deserves to be stewarded in some way. I don't think that we should just let it go. But I also don't know if letting it become a really commercialized space is what's right either. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Yes, sir?
Good evening. I'll try to be quick. I know it's getting late. My name is Gary LaCroix, Mill Road, and I have a couple of questions. First off, the, you have a rider on the land that says it will stay as agricultural use. Does it have to be, can we put a restriction that specifically says it has to be used as an orchard? Because I do think it is important that the character of this town and this land, particularly in the fact it's been an orchard for 300 years, it'd be very, more than nice to make sure that that provision was stayed in it so it could be used as an orchard. So that's a question first.
The state, the state regulations do not specify that it has to be an orchard. I don't know honestly whether the town could specify that. But I believe since the APR is a contract between, at this point, the owner of the land, us, and the state, the state determines what can and can't be done, which means that agriculture, which covers a wide variety of things, everything from trees, plants, forestry, hay, animals, and fruit.
Okay, so no, you can't guarantee that this can stay as an orchid. Second thing is, when you're entering into negotiations, is this a bid or into negotiations, I'm not sure, when you're putting this out for sale, but I'd be more interested if there was like an agency like the Trustees of Reservations or someone like that who has a, in their credo, preservation of land, and has manhattan, and has, and actually owns farmland, whether they, would they would be something you could like try to focus your sale to versus just someone who's in it for the money and trying to generate income?
Absolutely. And so the RFP process specifies very specific criteria for which applicants are most advantageous. And the point of the MOU that the Select Board and the Working Group signed was that we would hold public hearings to determine what the residents would like to see in those criteria. If we decide, if the residents, if you decide it has to be a nonprofit, or it has to be an orchard, or it has to be a mission-driven organization of any kind, that is the, that is the, those are the guardrails we can put in the RFP. The, all the applicants will be judged against those criteria, and the most desirable applicants will be the ones that we consider for final approval.
Okay.
I would also just like very briefly to say, this is not going to be a windfall. We are not going to get money out of this. This is, this sale is not intended to make money for the town. We have already discussed taking any, any income that we get from the sale and putting it towards protection of other agricultural land in town. The point of the Working Group is to protect the land, not to make money for the town. And I don't believe that any of us feel that we are going to get a large amount of money from the sale. I think that that has been mentioned several times. I want to make that clear.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
I'm sorry to talk to you guys. I'm feeling a little bit shy. Nevertheless, everybody says, here he goes, troublemaker. But the question I heard before that the town doesn't do a good job, whoever said that, Gino says the town does a beautiful job. We are very lucky to have a property like that. The question is, for three years, it's been lonely. But if you can't find anybody to take care of it, you switch, you still have to have orchies, use it as a farm. There's nothing wrong with that. If you can't get it as a farm, maybe somebody will come back again and say, ah, I'd like to have that, and I want to use it as a orchis. And I trust you guys. That's it. All right? I'm a little shy. Forgive me, okay? Nevertheless, I love you guys. You're doing a good job.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Wayne Bryant, 76 Tehadawong Road. In my heart, I understand the sentimentality of all the people that want to keep it as whatever it is, or let it go wild and all that. But my understanding is that we are already in violation of the APR, and that the town, in order to comply with the law, would have to run the property as, as an agricultural operation, planting at least half of the property. The town, we're not in that business. We don't have anybody who understands that business working for the town. I urge people to vote in favor of this.
Great. Thank you. If I could, we've had a number of comments, debates going on for a little bit. If I could just encourage people to come forward with new comments, new information. It's getting a little bit redundant. With that, sir, go ahead.
Yes, Tony Sephardi, 48 Nagog Hill Road, comment and maybe a suggestion. As founder said correctly, one of the requirements of the, to maintain APR status is that something like 40, 45% needs to be maintained as agricultural. Is that correct? And the proposal is to sell about 45% of that land. What happens next? Another 45% will be designated, which will then be sold again?
Mr. Moderator, thank you. No, the answer is 48 acres of the 129 are under the agricultural preservation restriction. We would sell all 48 of those acres, and half of those would have to be used for agriculture. So there is a clear definition, there's a clear distinction between the rest of the property, which is in conservation or open space, and the 48 acres we're talking about tonight. Of those 48, half, roughly 24, need to be used for agriculture.
And one possible suggestion, Acton has a community gardening area. Why can't we designate some of that as public access gardening area?
Two of the items which are not, do not, several of the items don't count as agriculture. Gentleman farms, like nonproductive farms, community gardens, and horse boarding are all not considered agricultural uses of the land, according to the state.
And for the record, I strongly oppose this measure, and I suggest that people vote accordingly.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Karen Morrison, 11 Spruce Street. I'm speaking as a resident, but as a point of reference, I've been a member of the Orchard Working Group, and I'm a member of the Select Board. And some of the information that I'd like to point out is that the House is not going to be put into APR. And that's one of the reasons that we have this article written the way it is, is to allow the Select Board and the Orchard Working Group to apply whatever restrictions we can to keep it from being developed. So, you know, if you want to preserve the land, that's what we're trying to do too. And in terms of, you know, there was a, there was a comment about reviewing lessons learned. And I'd just like to go over again what the makeup of the Orchard Working Group is. The Orchard Working Group consists of me and, you know, Matthew from the Select Board, but also professional farmers from, in Littleton. These are all residents, professional farmers, community farmers, abudders to the land, and the public of large, members and from the conservation community. We've all been looking at this, some longer than others, some much longer than others. And we have studied it. We have looked at it carefully. And where we ended up was a unanimous decision that selling is in the best interest of the orchard and in the best interest of the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Hi, I'm Amy Tarla Lewis, and I live at 3 Omega Way. And I have been a member of the Nagog Orchard Committee since its inception in the fall of 2021. I just wanted to address some of the concerns in the audience. We have reached out to all the nonprofit farms in the area, just like the Community Harvest Project. They are running an orchid and harvest in Harvard. And that orchid is supported by one very wealthy donor. And don't tell me one wealthy donor is going to show up, because every nonprofit hopes for that to have happened. It's not going to happen. I think another concern people have is we are going to be thoroughly screening the RFP candidates. So how many years they've been farming? How many acres are they currently managing? Do they own a farm? Is it income positive? We're going to be looking at their business plan. We're going to look at their ability to, what kind of assets they're bringing, what kind of capital they can bring, if they can get loans. And it's going to be very thoroughly screened. We are not going to let anyone into this orchard who can't manage the property and can't financially afford it and make a good go of it. In addition, people are wondering about if anyone, I mean, people keep saying they want it to see as an orchard. The challenge is, the reason why there's no more orchards is because people can't afford to orchard, to run apple farms. I mean, you're competing with apples from New Zealand, which you can buy cheaper sometimes than apples here. You're competing with apples from Washington State. The commodities market drives everything. And farming is really expensive. And with climate change, it's getting even harder. So this idea that it's going to stay an orchard, and it's going to be wonderful, is really just people's wanting to hold on to this very nostalgic idea of what they think this town's about. But the reality, farms change. Consumer tastes and preferences change. The commodity market moves things. This is, farms change. And we have some really wonderful applicants who really want to be here and part of our community, that want to do a diversity of things on the property, including replanting some of the apple trees. I mean, we want this farm to be successful. Why would we give the property back to the very people who let it rot for 20 years? Why would you give it back to them? They don't know how to do it, and they don't want to do it. Why? You don't. You want someone who's a professional farmer to do the work. You know, the right person will stay. If you have a lease, someone can come here, and they're going to demand all of these changes to the infrastructure and what they want. And maybe 10 years later, they leave, and we have someone new come, and then they want something totally different. And then we have to fund their operational plan. You know, it's just going to be like a yo-yo. When you have someone permanently here, they're going to invest.
Thank you. New information, please. Yes?
Charlotte Russell, 73 Foster Street. Was pointed out to me earlier tonight that my father, who spent over 30 years in town government, stood up at town meeting and argued for the purchase of this property. However, he grew up working on his grandfather's farm over the summers, inherited from his great-grandfather. And he knew that working farms didn't run very well on volunteer labor, except maybe for a grandson helping during the summer. The amount of property that is in agricultural restriction just is not feasible for volunteers. A previous speaker made the point about what didn't work in the past. And I think it's clear that what didn't work in the past was leasing. That no one wants to lease this property under the terms of the town. That was made in the presentation also. And so it seems to me that whether, however we vote tonight, the town ultimately has two, two choices. We either sell the property and find somebody who can manage an agricultural enterprise upon it, or we pay somebody to do that work, which is a huge ongoing expense. So, and I also will add that, you know, there are a lot of orchards, including Tower Hill Botanic Garden, that had to take out all their trees due to fire blight. That's a very serious thing that, that may even not be eradicated by taking out the trees without a fallow period. So I just think it's a huge enterprise for the town to run.
Thank you. Okay, yes?
Leah Mya Alpabam, 92 Foster Street. I'd like a couple of clarifications. I've heard a couple of things that have me feeling confused. I don't know if I missed a sentence, but one of them was the suggestion, suggestion that the town people can help write the request for proposals, the RFPs, in a way that would restrict the agricultural use. And on the other hand, I heard that the state has its ideas of what agricultural use means, and we cannot restrict what the RFP says. I'm a little confused by that. Could there be some clarification on that?
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. Go ahead. We, when we write the RFP, we are considering the applicants who want to purchase the property. And we can determine what qualities those applicants bring forward. The state determines what the land can and can't be used for. Once we sell it, it's true, we lose control over the property. What we would hope to find is a mission-driven organization, or an individual who has a very specific use of the property, and we all would be aligned on it. And when they purchase the property, they would then follow that mission or that vision in order to use the property as we, as we would like them to use it.
So within that framework, knowing that the state defines what the Agricultural Preservation Act means in terms of agriculture, how much input, how much say can we have as people coming to the Orchard Working Group meeting, the Select Men's meeting, to actually define the RFP and limit some of the agricultural uses, or define maybe an emphasis on half of the orchard, or a quarter of the orchard being preserved or renewed? Like, what's the, what's the play here that we have?
We can be as specific as we like in terms of the criteria for the RFP, with the understanding that the more specific we are, the more we limit our options.
Of course.
So what we can say is, we demand that the applicant maintains one quarter of the orchard in trees. And, and that if they do less than that, they're less desirable. And if they do more than that, they're more desirable. Ultimately, what I think what's going to happen is we're going to find an applicant who meets most of the criteria, or is perfect for some of the criteria, not perfect for others. But we are going to try our best to find someone who matches as many as possible.
Thank you. So my follow-up question to that would be, how, since there's no town newspaper, and not everybody even, you know, knows or comes to town meeting for sure, how would we have the most people informed, educated, and involved in helping define that RFP more, or in having the vote come back after the RFP goes out? And I know you need the vote tonight to authorize that. But then after it goes out, why couldn't it come back to another town meeting to approve the potential buyer?
So as we've discussed with town council, the process tonight would allow the Select Board to sell the property. If we aren't voting to allow the Select Board to sell the property, it's a different process.
Okay.
It would mean that the person who bids on it would still be waiting for an affirmative bid at town meeting in the fall. It may limit the people who apply. You know, it's not the same process as an RFP.
Totally understand that. Could you just answer the other part of the question about sort of educating, including, and, you know, I know you're doing, doing that to the degree that you can, but I'd like to hear it spoken to publicly.
Sure. So that's part of the MOU. That's part of the process that the Select Board and the Orchard Working Group worked out together, was to include public information sessions or public listening sessions in order to help define what goes into the RFP. And that's our attempt to get the public's input proactively, right? I think one thing that we can all agree on is that a proactive approach is, is what's needed here for, for a change. And that's what we're attempting to do, is apply a lesson learned and help, let the public proactively help us shape what those criteria are that will ultimately result in a winning RFP.
Thank you so much. I'll just say, I think the icon for Littleton is the apple, right? Is that correct?
I think so, yeah.
I'm pretty sure it is. So I hope there's some kind of compromise here between financial needs, sort of the need, the perceived need to sell it fast, and some of the longings, sentimental they're called, or longings for conservation. I hope there's a compromise through the RFP process.
Sure.
Thank you.
What I can say to that is that in terms of the responses that we got to our market research, there were plenty of nods in those responses, if nothing more, to the heritage of the land in terms of the orchard, right, and in terms of the apple trees. And there were lots of mentions of, you know, we want to keep some of the trees. We want to keep them along the, along the streets, for example, or along the, you know, so that it creates a nice vista. So just because it's not the primary purpose doesn't mean that we lose that heritage altogether.
My last name means apple tree, so I have a bit of a leaning in that direction.
I noticed that myself.
It's German, but Alpabam means apple tree. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, last two.
Kristin Kazokas, Cottage Way. I'm also a trustee at Littleton Conservation Trust, but I'm speaking tonight as myself. but I'm speaking tonight as myself and not for the organization. I'm here in support of selling this property. I am also live in the area to the orchard. So I drive by two, three times a day. It's a beautiful piece of property. And I just wanted to touch base on the conservation component of the APR because not only is it to support agriculture, but it is also to preserve our natural resources. So the APR is written to keeping that in mind. And so that the agricultural land is surrounded by our Saratoga Forest and other conservation land, as well as Lake Nagog, the water system that goes into the Nishoba Wetlands that also carries over into Fort Pond. So I think that in terms of letting go of this property to a private person or organization, that there are measures put into place that seem to help us protect our mission and why we purchased the land in the first place. I also believe that through the APR process with the criteria, not only is it all the components of what type of farming you want, but I think all the passion that everybody has and the sentimental value that you have connected to that land can also be put into the APR as listing as criterias. It can be written so that we can find out what type of philosophy the farmers have in relation to land and what our community wants. And it also can help us as a community to define who we want to bring into our community together. And so I feel like that this vote is actually a first step in this whole process. And that if all of you are really that passionate about the land and taking care of the land, then it's our responsibility to step up and keep our voice, say our voice, say what is important to us and not just leave it to the Orchard Working Group and the Select Board. And they have worked very hard to put into place an avenue for us to have a voice in this process. And so I just ask that, let's use it. They want to hear from us. And this is our opportunity to care for the land in a way that we haven't been able to. And let's see what else we want to talk about. I also want to talk about the Nishoba praying Indians. The orchard was at the center of Newtown, which was designated in order for Littleton to be incorporated. And so there is a long history of this land being ancestral land, which is connected also to Saratoga Forest. I am also a part of the Wickham and Durkey lineage. I live on land that seven generations. And so it's also a part of my ancestral land. And so, yes, this land is important to us, so.
It's time.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, yes, sir.
Hey, good evening. John Segal, Nishoba Road. I'm in direct relation to that property quarter mile away. It's one of the reasons I moved to this beautiful town. And someone mentioned before that there's nostalgia. For me, it's 400 years of nostalgia. And it only took the town about 20 years to mess that up. And it really comes down to, I believe, negligence. And I'm aggravated that the town voted to buy this property from the Morrisons. It was our obligation to maintain that property and we dropped the ball. There was no oversight. When did we do walkthroughs to make sure that the property was not being degraded? Why did the pipes in the house break? Because the town forgot to put oil in the house. So they froze, it destroyed. Why didn't we go and fix the house? Because we forgot to buy homeowner's insurance. So there's no insurance on the home. So for me, it's about trust. And that trust has been degraded by the negligence of the town. And that, for me, is a hard no until I can get my trust back to know that you'll be doing a just, a positive service to the people of this town by making sure this property is stewarded in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think, have you spoken already in this article, ma'am?
I have not.
You have not? Okay, go ahead. New information only.
Joanne Deary, Harwood Avenue. I have a question about the APR. I know it requires that 50% of the land remain in agriculture. What about the other 50%? Can houses get built on that or does it like?
Okay, go ahead.
It's turned off. Someone turned the mic off. Structures, no, structures cannot be built on the land. In fact, even greenhouses are very closely scrutinized and often are denied.
Okay, thank you. And I just wanted to say, I've sat in on the Orchard Working Group meetings for the last many months. And those people have worked so hard for our town. They know more about this orchard, its history, what can be done, what can't be done, the rules, the state law. It breaks my heart to think that this orchard would be sold. But there's no one in town who knows more about it than the Orchard Working Group. And I might eat these words, but I think there's no better qualified group of people to decide who should be stewarding this land going forward. Thank you, Orchard Working Group.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're ready to move to the vote. And this does require two-thirds majority. So the vote will be, all those in favor of the motion as read and as printed in your warrant booklet, will press one, the yes button. And those opposed, the red or no button in the next 30 seconds. And we're starting now. All right, that's the end of the 30-second voting period. 407 votes cast, 269 in favor, 138 opposed. The two-thirds majority is not carried. The article fails. Thank you very much. We declare the vote. And we'll move forward in the warrant. I suspect a number of people want to take their leave now and will be dropping off their clickers. Okay, why don't I recommend, we'll take a five-minute recess and let people leave that want to leave. And we'll pick up with Article 12. Seats. Meeting will come to order. Okay, if everyone can please find their seat. Would you like to get going?
You've got four minutes on article to get us out of here tonight.
Good luck at that. Okay. We're going to pick up where we left off with Article 12. And I'll just remind, remind you that about 10:30 or so, we're going to make a decision about whether we think we can finish tonight or whether we need to come back for another session. But we're going to certainly do our best. Anyway, Article 12, moved and seconded by the Select Board that the town vote to approve Article 12 as printed in the warrant. Okay. And just another reminder about our electronic clickers. You might have noticed during the last debate that after 10 minutes, they go, go to sleep. So you need to click them once to wake them up so that you can vote. But you probably already know that. But just be reminded that after 10 minutes of inactivity, they, they will go to sleep on you, but you can wake them up again pretty quickly. Okay, we've made the motion on Article 12. I'm going to turn it over to Assistant Town Administrator, Ryan Ferrara, for the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Through you, I'd like to introduce Brian Forz. He is the, our owner's project manager for the Indian Hill Project. If he would be allowed to speak through you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right. So wanted to provide a presentation to you. Just a quick walk down memory lane for town meeting. Back in February 2023, Littleton Special Town Meeting, we purchased the Indian Hill Music School. Originally, the advertised price was 4.2 million. The town offer was 3.5 million. And in the end, our accepted offer was 3.5 million. So that purchase was executed last March 31st. The town has borrowed 3.5 million dollars to fund that purchase on a short-term basis. And Article 25 in this warrant funds or authorizes the transfer of $657,000 from the Capital Stabilization Fund to reduce the final borrowing amount for the purchase of Indian Hill. So at the May 1st, 2023 Annual Town Meeting, roughly a year ago, we were about to come forward with a, an estimate for what the cost of the work would be to rehabilitate 36 King Street. And in the meeting before town meeting, we met with the Select Board and the Finance Committee. And a decision was made to pull that article from town meeting at that time. The charge that we were given was basically three things. First of all, to work with our Parks and Recreation Department and our school department in determining more clearly what their needs were for that project. To try to hire a OPM, which is Vertex, is here today. And LLB, our, an architect, to help us clarify that project. As well as to sort of provide a lean scope of work here. We, we didn't really want to, we wanted to rehabilitate within the four walls of what was there. And to most predominantly tighten up the building envelope as well as look at the roof. And that was our charge at that town meeting. And we subsequently came back forward in the fall and town meeting allocated $400,000 for the design of that project. And what that design looks like, I'm going to turn it over to Brian to provide an outline for you.
Thank you, Ryan. And thank you all for having me. I'm Brian Forz from Vertex Companies. We're the OPM for the renovation of this project. I'd like to go over, or I've been asked to go over some of the scope for this project. And here you're seeing some of the layout of the floor plans that we have of the property. It's a little difficult to see, but if you can see some of the darker black areas, that's actually the only new partitions that we're, that we're installing as part of this project. The layout was such that we were able to fit the programming for both the school department and the Parks and Rec adequately into this property. So this is the second floor, where you have admin, administration areas, superintendent offices, bathrooms, kitchenette area, as well as some offices for business manager and accountant. Next slide, please. We have the first floor, which will be mainly for the Parks and Rec, where we have also program coordinator office space, hallway space, some new conference areas, as well as shared conference areas along the perimeter of the property. We also have the gym and theater area, which will be utilized by the Parks and Recreation as well. Next slide, please. We'll also be utilizing, utilizing the basement area for Parks and Recreation. We'll have clubhouse areas, additional storage space and some homework space for after-school programs. Next slide, please. Some of the project scope, part of this scope includes replacement of the asphalt shingle roof in, in full replacement. We will be repairing and repainting the exterior trim on the property. We'll be bringing fire suppression up to code. We will be upgrading the lighting and electrical systems throughout, throughout the building, as well as upgrading and maintaining any of the HVAC equipment that's currently in the building now. We'll also be refinishing interior wood floors, ripping up some of the old carpeting and replacing in kind, as well as repainting the interior walls, doors, frames and ceilings. As for some of the soft costs that are not included as part of the construction scope, we have some of the things that the town will need to purchase that we've included as part of this total budget. We need to install a security system, which is inclusive of access control and security such that the Parks and Rec can have access to their own area, as well as the school department. We've worked with the fire department to make sure that we're compliant with the equipment and the connections onto the side of the building are with their needs. We'll be upgrading the technology throughout the, throughout this building, bringing in town fiber. That also will be communicating over our access control and security systems that can be looked at off-site. Interior, interior space reconfiguration for programmatic needs. We went over some of the partitions that would be built on both floors in order to accommodate more conference spacing as well. Wayfinding signage and ADA upgrades will also be needed as part of this to achieve code, as well as exterior building signage to identify what the, the usage of this property will be. We also have costs in here for moving some of the existing furniture for both departments. We've done an inventory of what the, the furniture is for both departments. We want to utilize what we can. We also have placeholders for additional furniture for some of the new spaces that they will have. So I'll kick this back over to Ryan. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. So, so our, our key goals here was a request from the Finance Committee and also the Select Board was to have and obtain actual construction bids for renovation. Again, November, Special Town Meeting voted $400,000 for OPM and design services. So we moved forward with that and executed a contract with our OPM Vertex and Brian, as well as our design firm, LLB Architects. We also work with PMBC to review the scope of the work and identify other ways that we might be able to save money in that renovation. So construction bids were issued in March 2024. We received two bids on April 5th. And the low bidder in the project is Classic Construction, who is based here in Littleton. So I think part of the cost was that they'd be so close. But it's great to be able to have a vendor here selected who is local and knows the town. So our total estimated cost, including OPM, design services and construction, is just south of 3.4 million. And Article 12 before you tonight is a request for $2,981,047. Our plan is to ask for a transfer from the Capital Stabilization Fund. So this will require a two-thirds vote. But we feel good about what we've done here. This number in terms of the actual budget is close to what we presented to the Finance Committee and the Select Board last year. But to give you a sense of where this is, our, our property purchase price is 3.5 million, another roughly 3.4 million for the rehabilitation. And that totals $6,881,047. And you compare that to what we're buying or paying for with the new, a new construction on our senior center. That was roughly about $700 per square foot. So if we were to build this as a new build, it would be roughly about $15 million. So roughly speaking, that's a difference of about $8.2 million or 120%. So I think town meeting is, and the town is getting some really good value out of this. We own the building and we believe that there, you know, really provides for a great opportunity here for Parks and Rec and for the administration to, to be moving forward with this. So a yes vote today allows us to move forward and issue a notice to proceed to Classic Construction. Mobilization will begin in the June to July timeframe. And the renovation timeline is about eight months. So we would hope to finish that work in the March 2025 timeframe at such point that Parks and Rec and school administration could move in. So with that said, we'll open up to questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any boards or committees that want to put forth an opinion? Article 12. If not, we can, we can open it up to, to the floor. And I think, Ryan, I think you mentioned it was a two-thirds vote, but it actually is a simple majority. I checked with council and the bar is lower than we thought it was. So, yes, sir, go ahead.
George Sanders, 672 Great Wood. Mr. Moderator, I want to commend the Select Board and the Mr. Moderator, I want to commend the Select Board and the town administration for their diligence and getting a good rate to rehab this building with what really needed to go out for bid that needed to be done to that building. And I was at one of the Select Board meetings there, and I think it was $189,000 to put a new roof on there. So, I says, yes, go ahead and put a new roof on this thing now, because we only had like about five years left on it, so I felt that we would get a good price by doing that at that particular time. So, the amount of money that we spent on this building, I think is worthwhile, the 21,000-plus square feet. How many square feet is in the new senior center?
About 17,000 square feet.
Is 17,000 square feet in the new senior center?
Yeah, that's, that's about right, yeah.
That's about right. And we got 21,500 in this building?
Roughly speaking, yes.
Thirty-six?
That's right.
Well, I don't think y'all was very diligent with the taxpayer's money here. And the reason I'm saying that, because it was being said that, oh, it didn't have enough space, didn't have enough space, didn't have enough space. And it shows that we got 21,000, and you only got 17 in there, and we're paying 18.5 million dollars for a new building. I'm smarter than a rock, and I can tell you, that doesn't make sense, that we went down this road, and we have the money to do it, we also have the money to put in there. I believe that this town will hoodwink.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to Article 12? If not, we'll proceed to a vote, and the motion is read. So, if we could queue up another vote, it is a simple majority vote. And green is yes, and no is red. And over the next 30 seconds, you will make your selection. So, we'll declare the voting open now, and you'll have 30 seconds to make that choice. There were 245 votes cast, and 207 in favor, 38 opposed. The motion carries, and I declare the vote. Thank you very much. All right. Moving on to Article 13. It's been moved and seconded by the Planning Board that the town voted to approve Article 13 as printed in the warrant. And let me first ask a member of the Planning Board whether the requisite public hearing was held on this zoning amendment. Is there a member of the Planning Board that can come to a microphone? Oh, there you are. Wasn't looking, Jeff, I'm sorry. Yes, go ahead, Jeff.
The Planning Board duly advertised and held the public hearing regarding the proposed zoning amendment, MBTA Communities Zoning Bylaw and Zoning Map Amendment on Thursday, May 2nd, 2024.
Okay, thank you. You have a presentation?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
I will introduce this matter, and then our planning consultant, Emily Anis, will present. Article 13 seeks to respond to the MBTA Communities Act, which has been brought forward to address the housing crisis in Massachusetts. This is a crisis of housing for what is termed "the missing middle." These are the large number of workers who have decent jobs but not decent prospects for settling in a home of their choice. By anecdote and actual numbers, some are leaving the state, some may be your friends and family. The Act is designed to spur housing creation by requiring multifamily zoning near transit. This has the further goal of promoting sustainability by giving a great number of people a meaningful transit choice. Littleton is the host to a commuter rail station on the Pittsburgh line. The state has set a minimum goal of zoning for 750 units of new housing in Littleton. A huge number, but we are in the fortunate position of already having zoned for new housing in King Street Common, and the state is allowing us to count 600 of these already approved units toward our goal. Zoning to remain, to allow the remaining 150 units must be within one-half mile of the train station. Tonight, we are bringing forward a proposal to zone for that remaining amount. The November 1st town meeting did not support the zoning proposal for a vacant parcel next to the train station. We embarked on further meetings, a workshop, and a questionnaire. With that input, we are bringing forward a zone that includes two parcels, 295 and 305 Foster Street between Taylor Street and Route 2. Combined, they are of a size that will allow a low density of six units per acre. These parcels have already been developed. The parcel owners will decide if redevelopment makes sense. These parcels are close to the Taylor Street interchanges with 495 and Route 2. A yes vote is important for Littleton. A yes vote will bring Littleton in compliance with the Act. A yes vote will enable our eligibility for state grants. A yes vote will bring much-needed housing to our community. I would like to introduce Emily Anis, the consultant who has helped the Planning Board with this matter. Our goal has been to put forward zoning that will satisfy the state, and Emily has brought a detailed knowledge of the process that will result in compliance.
Thank you, Jeff. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to just add some additional information to give some color and facts to the summary that Jeff gave you. If we could have the next slide, please. That first slide introduced what the Act is. It is a state law. It does require that communities zone for multifamily as of right with certain dimensional standards, the 15 units per acre, the geographic standard of the half-mile. This slide tells you what the MBTA Communities Act is not. It is not an act that requires the town itself to produce housing. Zoning gives an option to property owners to choose to use the zoning to build something that meets that zoning or not. The Act is not required to produce anything, and in fact, the Act does not have a housing target. Nobody is coming back and saying, did you actually build housing underneath this? It is also not an affordable housing act. The expectation is that most of the units that are produced, if any, will be market-rate units. Communities have the option to have affordable housing as part of it, but they are not required to do so. And finally, it is not, or it is not a one-size-fits-all tool for housing. Every community has a wide variety of housing needs. The MBTA Communities Act can help address some of those needs, but not all of those needs. And finally, it's not viewed as optional by the state, and anyone who may have been following this will have seen that. Next slide, please. So, Jeff mentioned that the Planning Board has since the November, or annual town meeting, rather, or special fall town meeting, has done significant outreach. They recognized that the community did not like the first proposal in the vote against it. You can see the dates up there, but those do include not just the required public hearings for town meeting, but also a special meeting where public input was asked on nine separate scenarios. And what you see tonight was built off of that public meeting and a resulting community-wide survey. I should also add that the Select Board, the Finance Committee, and the Planning Board have all voted in favor of this. Next slide, please. These are the requirements for Littleton. Jeff already mentioned them, but 50 acres of land, a minimum of 50 acres of land, some of that must be within that half-mile radius, 750 units, some of which must be within that half-mile radius, and average of 15 units per acre across all districts. Next slide. So, King Street Common and some adjacent land get to 80% of the way there. Jeff mentioned that 600 units can already be counted, same for the land. This is about 40, a little over 40 acres of land, so you're already mostly there. You just have to meet your geographic requirement around the station area. Next, please. So, there are some minimal changes to the existing zoning, but importantly, not the dimensional standards. We have to make a small tweak to affordable housing standards, and we have to make a small tweak to some requirements that require a special permit now. We're using the same criteria for the site plan process. Slide, please. These are the two parcels of land that are being rezoned to meet the station area requirement. As you can see from the gray shapes underneath the green overlay, they already have buildings on them. So, 295 and 305 Foster are within that half-mile radius. They're quite close to the Taylor-Foster corner, as Jeff mentioned, and they do meet the over 10 acres and over 150 acres within the station area. Next slide, please. Putting them all together, you meet all of the requirements for the geographic, the housing, and the unit capacity, which is an estimate of underzoning, how many housing units could be produced, not the actual number that would be produced, and also the required density. Next slide. These are the zoning parameters that are in the article in front of you. It is important to understand that all the multifamily is as of right. That means that you, an applicant, must meet all of the zoning requirements, and that includes what you see before you hear. So, the height can't be more than two and a half acres. The units per lot, dwelling units per lot, cannot be more than six units per lot, and the buildings cannot be, or six units per acre, sorry, and the buildings cannot be more than 12 units per building. If you look to the next slide, you'll see the other criteria. This is an overlay. An overlay sits on top of the existing zoning. A property owner has a choice to build under the existing zoning, which is industrial for both of these parcels, or to choose to use the overlay. Once they make that choice, they cannot change it. I've mentioned the 12 units per building and the six units per acre. There are development standards as part of this zoning, and the Planning Board also has the option of adding design guidelines, and certainly been a conversation that they've had. Next slide, please. Finally, there have been some questions about how much the town has received in grants from the state over the year. You can see that there has been over $15 million, almost $16 million, just from fiscal 19 to fiscal 2024, and a significant amount of annual grants that stand to be at risk if this is not passed. Next slide, please. And finally, as you can see from the reports up there, many of the criteria that were used to think about these parcels, to determine the development standards, other options come from previous processes and planning processes that the town has done. The goal was to make the MBTA Communities Act work for the town and meet the town's own desires for meeting their housing needs. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Thank you for that presentation. Are there any boards or committees that wish to weigh in on Article 13? I see the Finance Committee raised their hand. Yes, go ahead, please.
Hi. Brian Tarbox, Finance Committee. You're probably surprised. You're probably not. Check? Okay, okay. Well, okay. You're probably surprised to hear Finance Committee talking at all about a Planning Board article, because we generally don't. And it's still working.
Okay, so the, so Finance Committee generally doesn't talk about Planning Board articles, but we decided this time the Finance...
Check, 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 check. Check, 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 check.
Okay. Well, now you all will take me very seriously, right? So, Finance Committee decided that this article had enough fiscal implications that we wanted to talk about it, even though we generally don't talk about Planning Board articles. And so, I'm not going to talk at all about any of the zoning. I'm not even going to tell you how you should vote. I just want to give you a bit of the, the data points. There's a town, Milton, that voted not to go along with the zoning approach that the governor wanted. They immediately lost their grants. It's not an idle threat. The governor is taking this very seriously. As you saw in the, in the presentation, in the last six years, we've received $15,886,000 in grants. If we do not have the zoning article in place, we will not get those grants again. We will go to the bottom of the list if we're on the list at all. Every year, there's 100,000 for MVP, 200,000 for Housing Choice, 100,000 for Mass Work Grants. Again, you vote however you want, but this year, we closed a $3.5 million deficit. 15 million, we're good, but we're not that good. So, just take that as a data point.
Good, thank you. Anyone else that wishes, the board will go to... Okay. All set? Thank you, yes. Go ahead, sir.
George Sanders, 672 Great Road. With regards to this article, Mr. Moderator, there's no question in my mind that the town of Littleton needs to pass this bylaw. You can say what you want to, we're not in the position to fight the town, I mean, fight the state with regards to trying to get money that they're going to give us if we do what has been mandated not only by Littleton, but by the communities where they have the MBTA, and they're saying they need housing. Housing is the number-one priority for the governor. She means business. The attorney general means business. She says she going to enforce the law. So, I know we are very smart people here in the town of Littleton, because we have what we have because of us understanding the need for Littleton to survive and get our share out of the poke barrel. I've been talking with Representative Jim Osorio with regards to grants. The grant, we got Beaver Brookwell over there, that's $8,500 to upgrade that over there. So, I told him, I know that they're trying to get Fed money, but also talked to him on the phone and said, see what you can get state money. Also, with this project coming in, I also told him, because he's the chair of that $4 billion that the Speaker of the House signed him to, so he sort of kind of said to me, George, I will try to get whatever I can for Littleton. That is a good sign coming from a state representative. And I believe that he will do what he can to get money for us. So, let's don't cut off the revenue that is coming into Littleton through grants. We need the money, because there's less money that comes out of your pocket and my pocket in paying for certain things. So, I asked you humbly tonight to vote this article through, because we need to make sure that we contend to receive grant money and other funding from the state of Massachusetts. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Hi, Aaron Jodka, Harwood Ave. Question, probably for you folks over on the right. I saw one slide that said density of six units per acre. An earlier slide said the MBTA's program was like 15. Can we explain the difference there and making sure that we're not setting up an overlay district that technically is illegal?
So, it's a combined density over the entire, so the zoning bylaw includes King Street and the station area. The combined density has to be 15 units per acre, but we organized the station area, we were able to organize the station area at a lower density because of what's going on at King Street Common. So, the station area will have a density of no more than six units an acre. The King Street Common has already been zoned, and, excuse me, already has a special permit. So, that's what we were able to do to respond to very real concerns about a, and I'll go back to the November town meeting, it was a higher density on that site. It was a 15 units per acre on that site, and we got a clear, you know, determination that people didn't want that. So, in the station area, we're going for the six units. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Jared Elpeori. I'd be more concerned about what the state could do beyond grant money. Could they do the equivalent of like a comprehensive permit and just say, "Oh, if the town doesn't want, doesn't provide the zoning, we, the state, are going to approve it regardless." And more to the point is, we're kind of backed into a corner by the state, and if you don't like it, we should take it up with our state legislatures and our state government.
All right. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Charlotte Russell, 73 Foster Street. I'm sure I'm not going to like the development up there, but I know it's the right thing for housing shortages in the state, so I'll be voting for it. And I would also like to publicly thank through you, Mr. Moderator, Emily and Maren. We heard how much people want public input when we debated about the Orchard, and the workshops they ran for this were really crucial for understanding a very complicated issue. So, I thank them.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir?
Josh Harriman, 8 Brant Lane. I just have a very simple question. Section 173-252 of the article says reserved. What does that mean? Just says reserved in brackets.
That, Maran Two Hill, Town Planner, that means that if we would like to add more to this bylaw, if town meeting would like to add more to this bylaw in the future, they have that number to fill in.
So, we would have to do that at town meeting?
All zoning has to come to town meeting, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing no one in line, I think we're ready to move to vote. Well, okay, you've got to move a little faster.
Coming up here a lot tonight. I just want to ask a question once more. My name's Leamia Applebaum, 92 Foster Street. I'm just curious, is there cluster zoning in Littleton? Yes? Can that be applied to this?
Yes, it can.
It can? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Yes, go ahead.
Brian Mar, Harvard Road. I think the original thing that we talked about that kind of riffed us a bit was the original concept is dig up a meadow, right, to do the housing, and people didn't like that. You're going to repurpose some of the older, I think they're all deck buildings or something like that. Is that the plan? That parcel? I don't know, 503 or whatever. What is the property you're taking over? It's fine with me, but I think that's one of the inputs we gave is, we'll take some of those buildings instead. Where are all those buildings?
On Foster Street, near the intersection with Taylor Street.
Yeah, the old deck buildings, right. I'm an old decky.
Two of the 12 that we have, yes.
Good job. Good compromise. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. All right, I think we're ready to move to vote. The motion is read, and just wanted to remind you that it requires a majority vote rather than, normally, in a zoning article, it will be a 2/3rds vote. So, you might be asking yourself, why is this a majority? Well, it's because the state wants it, and they like to lower the bar for themselves. In the next 30 seconds, if you'd indicate your support or not for this zoning article, we'll be in business. So, voting begins now. And there were 230 votes, 210 in favor, 20 opposed. The motion passes, and I declare a vote on Article 13. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to the next article, which is Article 15. Authorize Use of Prudent Investor Rule for Town Trust Funds, which is a very routine-sounding article, and it actually is. Moved and seconded by the Select Board and the Trust Fund Commissioners that the town vote to approve Article 15 as printed in the warrant. Does anyone wish to speak to Article 15? If not, we'll again move to the Finance Committee? No? Nope. We'll again move to a vote on this. Requires a majority vote. So, put the vote on Article 15. The motion is read, so please, in the next 30 seconds, please signify either yes or no. Make sure your votes have been calculated. You get a little okay in the display if your vote's been counted. So, beginning now, 30 seconds from now. Thank you. 171 votes cast this time, 165 in favor and 6 opposed. The motion carries, and I declare a vote. Thank you very much. Moving on to Article 17, an amendment to the Oak Hill Stabilization Fund. It's been moved and seconded by the Conservation Commission that the town vote to approve Article 17, just as it's printed in your warrant book. Is there someone who can describe this amendment for town meeting? Someone from the Conservation Commission or Select Board, perhaps? There is no one from ConsCom? Or do we just want to vote? Okay. Yes, go ahead, Chase.
Tim, I can address this as far as Conservation Commission is concerned. It's really a fairly administrative article in terms of moving around resources that we've been utilizing in the past and sort of where that's being drawn from. This is pretty typical Conservation Commission activity. It's more an accounting exercise than an actual activity.
Okay. Very good. My understanding is that this would permit maintenance to be allowable activity for this fund, and the succeeding article actually transfers funds for that purpose. So, it's important that town meeting pass this by a 2/3rds margin in order for Article 18 to go forward. So, with that, we'll move forward to a vote on the amendment to the Oak Hill Stabilization Fund. Okay, please indicate whether you're in favor or against the motion as read during the 30-second voting period, which starts now. Seems like our vote totals are going down with each succeeding vote. Okay. 168 votes cast, 165 in favor, 3 opposed. It passes by the necessary 2/3rds margin, and I declare a vote. Thank you very much. Oh, is it, is it, is it the witching hour? Okay, well, we've reached 10:30, which, under our rules, we don't start any new business after 10:30 unless we believe that there's an opportunity to conclude tonight's business. So, it's a matter of, you know, do you want to keep going, or do you want to come back or not come back tomorrow night? So, so, I guess we won't, do we, do we want to do an electronic vote so people can vote? Yeah, can we tee up a vote for go on? Do we want to go on? Yeah. Ask him to...
I'm saying we no longer have 20 minutes left.
What's that?
I'm saying, I don't think we have more than 20 minutes of business.
Oh, we can get it done. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, we're going to have a vote, quick vote on whether to continue with the warrant or whether this will be the last article of the night. Okay, the vote is whether or not to continue with the rest of the warrant. All those in favor indicate by pressing yes. Those opposed, press no in the next 30 seconds, starting now. Voting is now closed. There were 157 votes cast, 132 in favor and 25 opposed, and we will continue. And I predict we will have 132 votes on the next article. The 25 will vote with their feet now. Moving on to Article 18, this kind of a companion article to 17. This is actually moved and seconded by the Conservation Commission that the town vote to appropriate $20,000, as printed in Article 18. This is using the expanded definition that was approved in the previous article. Is there anyone that wishes to speak to Article 18? If not, we can move to vote. Yeah, okay. You know the drill. Green means yes, and red means no. Over the next 30 seconds, indicate your choice. Thank you. Go, start. Running out, it's like a game show now. Well, it's looking up, yeah. All right, that's the end of the voting period. 151, 52 votes cast, and it's almost our, yeah, first unanimous vote of the night. 151 in favor, 1 opposed. Motion passes by the necessary majority, and I declare a vote. Thank you very much. Moving on to Article 19, which is fiscal year 2025 capital items from available funds, free cash specifically. I'm going to treat this, it's moved and seconded by the Select Board and the Finance Committee that the town vote to appropriate $1,493,000, as printed in Article 19 of the warrant. And I'm going to treat this like the budget, and if you have a hold on any individual item, please say so in a loud voice, and we'll go back to it. Otherwise, we'll vote on the total. DPW Parks, $39,000. DPW Highway, $300,000. DPW Highway, $75,000. DPW Highway, $35,000. DPW, $60,000. Police, $200,000. Police Communications, $50,000. Schools, $120,000. Schools, $140,000. Schools, $125,000. Land use, $30,000. Town clerk, $19,000. Fire, $175,000. Fire, $95,000. Cemetery Department, $30,000, for a total of $1,493,000. Hearing no holds. I think we can move to a vote, and the motion is read. So, all those in favor of the motion, please, I will take a minute to get Article 19 up. If you're in favor, please vote yes. Press the green button, and no if you're not in favor. Press that button over the next 30 seconds, starting now. How do people feel about the 30 seconds? Too long, or just enough time? Too long? Want to try 20? Yeah? Okay. The next one will do 20. Okay. And that's the end of the voting period. And again, 149 votes cast, 148 in favor, 1 opposed. Article 19 is passed by the necessary majority. Thank you very much. We'll move on to Article 20, which is moved and seconded by the Select Board and Finance Committee that the town vote to transfer and appropriate $241,145.28, as printed in Article 20 of the warrant. And let me read through the totals for you. I want to find out what that .28 is all about. 25,000, Town Administrator's Office, 25,000. Human Resources Office, 45,000. Transfer Special Injury Leave Indemnity Fund, 125,000. Transfer Opioid Special Revenue Fund, $46,145.28, for a total of $241,145.28. Okay. Anyone wish to be heard on Article 20? If not, we'll proceed to a vote. Okay? Okay, let's, okay, we're going to, we're going to try this. Please vote yes or no within the next 20 seconds, and we'll see how that works. Okay, and that's the end of the voting period. There were 149 votes cast, same amount approximately as last time, 142 in favor, 7 opposed. The motion carries by the necessary majority, and I declare a vote. Thank you very much. We'll move forward to Article 21, which requires a 2/3rds vote, making a change in the previous borrowing authorization. Okay, it's been moved and seconded by the Select Board and the Finance Committee that the town vote to approve Article 21 as printed in the warrant. So, the language is identical to what's printed in front of you. Does anyone wish to be heard or make a presentation? Select Board or Finance Committee? Finance Committee, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve Nudie, Finance Committee. This article simply amends a previous town meeting article for the design of the senior center. It adds the word "in construction," because we did not spend all the money towards design, and we need to apply some of those funds towards the construction of the building. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to... Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard? Yes, sir?
Mr. Moderator, George Sanders, 672 Gray Road. You know, I stand here tonight, and I say trust has been broken with me with this town with regards to spending taxpayers' money here. How do I know this is right, the 1.5 here? Because you told us before that we needed to build a senior center. And I'm not happy with hearing tonight the amount of space that we are billing, and the space that was in the building that would have been $6 million, which would have saved us $18,000 instead of building this new bill. And you ain't heard the last of this with me with regards to this. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard with respect to Article 21? Does require a two-thirds majority, since it's making a change to an earlier borrowing authorization. If not, we can proceed to a vote. So if we could have the vote up there for Article 21, amend the senior center project article. Okay, we're gonna have a 20-second voting period, and please vote either yes or no over the next 20 seconds, starting now. Okay, very good. There were 146 votes cast, 135 in favor, 11 opposed. Motion passes by the necessary majority, and I declare to vote. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move forward now to Article 25, which is authorize the transfer of funds from the Capital Stabilization Fund to pay for a portion of the 3236 King Street Building, formerly Indian Hill Music School. And it's been moved and seconded by the Select Board that the town vote to approve Article 25 just as it's written in your warrant booklet. Okay? Does anyone wish to be heard with respect to Article 25? Select Board? Okay, the floor is open if anyone wants to opine on Article 25. Anyone? Looks like someone's making their way to the microphone, either that or they're leaving. Go ahead, ma'am.
Helen Bailey, Roxbury Drive.
Yes.
This is inappropriate. However, before we leave tonight, I would like to ask if the next town meeting, perhaps the school scholarship, I mean, the activities might be canceled from that day. Otherwise, people could find a place to park. I mean, there were so many sports things that we had to park over Helen Pond. Well, why can't you do anything about it, then?
Okay, it's just a little off point, it's been heard. And we'll try to do something with that. Anyone else wish to be heard regarding Article 25? If not, we'll move to a vote, and it's a majority vote on the transfer under Article 25. Okay, over the next 20 seconds, please indicate whether you support or oppose the motion as read under Article 25. And we'll start that voting period now. Okay. And there's our total votes is 148. 138 in favor, 10 opposed. Motion passes by the necessary majority, and I declare to vote. Thank you very much. Moving on to Article 26, Creation of School Stabilization Fund. This requires a two-thirds vote. The creation of a new stabilization fund by statute requires a two-thirds vote. It's been moved by the Select Board and the Finance Committee that the town vote to approve Article 26 as printed in the warrant. So is there anyone that wants to speak? The Finance Committee, we'll hear from them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Steve Nudie, Finance Committee. This article creates the School Building Stabilization Fund and deposits $1,180,000 into it. You heard me talk before the meeting about the Shekelenee Project that's coming up. Any funds that we can put aside into the stabilization account certainly helps us keep the amount that we put as part of the debt exclusion override to the minimum amount that we can. It's going to help our tax bills in the overall sense. So we encourage you to please approve this article. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone who wishes to speak regarding Article 26? Yes, sir?
Thank you. Mitt Wanzer, Mill Road. I just wonder what kind of free cash is available overall, and how this number was arrived at proportionally to go toward the school building.
Okay, thank you. Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Our free cash position varies from year to year, and it's in our financial policies how we would distribute those funds. And a certain percentage of the distribution of those funds goes to our various stabilization accounts, and this would be one of them.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak regarding Article 26? If not, we can move to a vote. And we'll queue that up. Okay, it requires a two-thirds vote, just to remind you. So over the next 20 seconds of the voting period, please indicate a yes or no that you support the motion as read under Article 26, starting now. Okay, voting has ended. 136 total votes, 126 in favor, 10 opposed. It passes by the necessary two-thirds majority. Thank you very much. We now move, because we passed some of the earlier consent agenda items, to Article 29, the funding of collective bargaining agreements. And you have the revised motion for Article 29 on your green handout sheets, the final, final one. Motion for Article 29, it describes the two unions that the town has reached an agreement with, and that the amount that will be necessary to fund the new CBA or the new contract. Moved and seconded by the Select Board that the town vote to approve Article 29 as amended and as printed in the annual town meeting amendment handout. Is there anyone that wishes to speak, Select Board? Yes?
Certainly. Just as read, or as the article states, we have four collective bargaining agreements, police, fire, dispatch, and DPW. The committees and the managers tried very hard to reach agreements on all four, obviously before town meeting. Were able to reach agreement with two of those. Those are the two that were, that you see here, these MOUs between dispatch and the DPW union. So we still have police and fire, and we will hope to see those soon. But as far as this town meeting goes, those are the two that we have reached agreements with for the next three years. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to Article 29, the funding of two collective bargaining agreements? If not, we can move to a vote, and it requires a majority vote. So the vote on Article 29, you voted yes, that you're in favor of approving those two CBAs, or no, that you are opposed. And it, the motion is, was read from the green amendment handout. So the voting period of 20 seconds will start now. Okay, voting has ended. There were 139 votes cast, 133 in favor, six opposed. Motion passes by the necessary majority, and I declare to vote. Thank you very much. Moving on to Article 30. It's been moved and seconded by the Select Board that the town vote to approve Article 30 just as it's printed in the warrant. Okay, does anyone wish to speak to Article 30? It's pretty self-explanatory. Someone running to the microphone?
I'm gonna get really quick. Hi, I'm Tim Buck. You can find me at Lori Lane. I just don't understand why we'd want to create our own Board of Health if for years we've been using Nishoba. I have no experience in public health, but I just wonder, why are we doing this?
Okay, thank you. Somebody want to tackle that one? Okay?
Good evening. Oops, sorry about that. Thank you for the very warm welcome earlier. Just wanted to let you know that the Board of Health had voted, and they advocated to establish their own health director. And in order to do that, we would have to be pulling away from the Nishoba Valley Consortium. But it's a requirement out of their consortium that you stay in for one year longer. So hence, we, we are staying in as contractually obligated for this one more year. That's it.
Thank you, and I guess in a nutshell, like, what's the, in the 11:30 nutshell, like, what's the benefit of the town of doing our own Board of Health versus, or are there problems that we've been having with the Nishoba Board of Health?
Well, through the Board of Health, and they've been committed to examining the activity level in, with the added development that's going to be going on, that's going to, that should require more of a health effort or focus on the town, which would warrant having an individual health director.
Cool, thanks.
Thank you.
A quick question. Does that make economic sense right now? Thank you. Say, what else wish to, I'm sorry, Town Administrator, you want?
It is, it was vetted. The investment in that position was vetted, and it is the sound investment for the community. Thank you for the question.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am?
I wonder whether it isn't helpful for a small town like Littleton to have a larger, what? More people to speak to them, because the Board of Health is a small group in Littleton, and can be prejudiced, and not quite what people want. The Board of Health had been very good to us in the past, and I wonder why we're going away from it. The Nishoba Board of Health, I meant.
Okay, thank you very much. Yes, sir?
Good evening, everyone. Dan Kane, Whitetail Way. I'm speaking as a resident, but I'll slide my other hat on a little bit. I'm actually the current chair of the Board of Health. A little bit of history, that the town recognized the Board of Health, so some language differences. We have a Board of Health, five members, elected board. We represent public health authority within the community under Mass General Law as well as our own town bylaws. We work within the Nishoba Associated Boards of Health. They are not a Board of Health. They are merely a contracted agency providing nursing, sanitary, and inspectional services on behalf of the town, no different than hiring a power-hailing contractor for the highway department. They simply function that day-to-day functionality that we did not have as an internal resource. They have been a great partner for us for a very, very long time. However, as many organizations are, they are understaffed to provide adequate resources for our growing community. This evening, we looked at a zoning amendment, which is looking at additional 800 housing units, potentially, potentially, here in Littleton. We are one of the largest communities within the Nishoba, the Nishoba Associated Board of Health organization, and simply, they can no longer meet the day-to-day operational needs to ensure that our town is safe from a public health perspective. Again, I'm not disparaging them, they've been wonderful partners and talented people. We are simply too big for them to be able to adequately resource us. The decision was made two years ago to establish an internal, within Littleton, Department of Health, providing internal nursing services, inspectional services, investigations, full Board of Public Health perspective. This evening, we actually approved the budget for Board of Health for $165,000 to cover expenses, staff, that's all part of that. Currently, we are double-dipping. As part of the relationship, we needed to step away from Nishoba. That is a two-year process. We need to approve it, we need to notify them, and then there's a one-year so that they can manage their budgets before we can actually remove it. So right now, we're transitioning from their external contracted services into an internal organization, providing services 40 hours a week within the town. That's, so right now, we're paying twice. So if we don't approve this this evening, we're going to be continuing to pay for at least another year approximately $50,000 to $60,000 to the Nishoba Associated Boards as contracted agency to provide those services which we are bringing in town. So that's obviously a concern. Again, they've been a great partner. We've appreciated all their work, and we appreciated their support through this transition. It really is, they're great, they simply don't have the resources to support what we need here in town. So I hope that answers some of the questions. Thank you. Please vote for it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Whoops. Yes, sir?
John Mallard, 18 Deer Run Road. How much money are we saving doing this?
Okay, Assistant Town Administrator?
Mr. Moderator, through you. We're actually not saving any money, as the previous speaker said. We're double-dipping for this additional year. It was a requirement for us to stay with Nishoba for an additional year. We're doing that here, and the hope is that in the FY '26 budget, we'll be able to remove those expenses from the budget to the tune of about, I think it's $35,000.
So you're saying it's cheaper for us to have our own Board of Health than it is to be with this community?
I'm not, no, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that we're double-dipping in the FY '25 budget, meaning that we're budgeting...
You went ahead and hired somebody.
Yes.
I see. So there's been no savings here?
That wasn't, I believe, and Dan, you can help clarify, the purpose of this was, was not a savings purpose, it was a public health concern.
It was to spend more money.
You can address that to the Board of Health. Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you. Guess we can proceed with a vote. The motion under Article 30. All those in favor, the motion is read under Article 30. Please indicate by pressing yes on your handheld device, or no if you're not in favor over the next 20 seconds, beginning now. Okay, voting has ended. 131 votes cast, 115 in favor, 16 opposed. Motion passes by the necessary majority. Thank you very much. We now come to three citizens petitions, which the petitioners have indicated, all of the petitioners indicated they are not going to go forward with those petitions at this town meeting. However, the petitioner of Articles 31 and 32 has a substitute motion that he would like to make. So regarding Article 31, Mr. Sanders, if you'd make that motion?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. First, I want to... First, I want to thank the citizens that signed this petition with regards to the marijuana smell. We received, I received a letter back from the town solicitor stating what we needed to do, what we needed to do.
I'm sorry, George, do we have the motion first?
Okay.
Yeah.
The motion is move that no affirmative action be taken on Article 31 and it be referred back to the Littleton Planning Board.
Okay, is there a second on that? Okay, been moved and seconded. Go ahead with your explanation, please, sir.
I want to say, whatever we do, we need to do it right. So, we got the information back that the town sent out to the solicitor and he gave us information as to how this needs to be handled. And it needs to go through the planning board for some public hearings on it and possible with the smell, there may be other regulations in the state about smell. So, I just want to thank the people and I don't want to waste your time here tonight. So, that's the reason I'm asking you go back to the planning board so we can work out and come back again because it is a problem in the town and hopefully, we're gonna get it taken care of. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think we can move to vote on Mr. Sanders' motion, which is that he's moved that no affirmative action be taken on Article 31 and that it be referred back to the Littleton Planning Board. So, it's a motion to pass over Article 31. So, please indicate either yes or no during the voting period, which begins now. What's that? You have to redo it? Okay, hang on, hang on. Okay, we're gonna restart the timer for you. Starting now. Okay, thank you. Here we go. Okay, voting is over. One-hundred and thirty-one votes were cast, one-hundred and eighteen in favor, thirteen opposed. We are passing over Article 31 and Madam Clerk, please record. No affirmative action was taken on Article 31. Okay, we'll move to Article 32. Mr. Sanders, do you have a motion for Article 32?
Move that no affirmative action be taken on Article 32 and it be referred back to the Littleton Select Board.
Okay, is there a second on that? Okay, moved and seconded. Do you have a statement you'd like to make on that or another explanation?
On this particular article, again, received a letter back from the town solicitor stating what we needed to do. And I think in, since I got that letter, that perhaps that the Select Board needs to revamp their policy with regards to citizens being able to ask questions on a upgrade of a project, whatever, so that answers can be given to those attending the meeting. So, I think that they talked about it before it was put on the warrant. So, I think we can work that out by going back to the Select Board.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone wish to speak with respect to Mr. Sanders' motion under Article 32? Okay, we'll move to a vote. Let's try this one old-school. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed. Okay, the ayes have it. I declared a unanimous vote. Madam Clerk, please so record. No affirmative action was taken on Article 32. We'll then move to Article 33. The petitioner is under the weather, could not be here this evening, would prefer not to go forward with this motion until a future town meeting that she can attend. So, I'm going to ask that we pass over Article 33 without motion. So, Madam Clerk, please record. No affirmative action taken on Article 33 for a lack of, lack of emotion. Yes, sir?
Point of order, sir. Do we need to have the petitioner to go forward? The motion's here. It's pretty straightforward.
Well, no, you don't, but I think in all deference to the petitioner who recently had surgery, I told her we would pass it over. So...
I'd move that we advance the article, sir.
Yeah, that's a good point. We advertised in the beginning of the meeting that we were passing over four articles and this was one of them. So, I know that some people did not stay to the bitter end because they thought we were passing over it.
Understood, good point. I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay, thank you. So, Madam Clerk, please record. No affirmative action taken on Article 33 for a lack of emotion. And with that, we come to the end of a rollicking evening. Just a few notes before we take a motion to dissolve. First of all, I've been told that there is construction in the common area tonight due to the sewer project. So, if you go that way in your way home, don't find a way around that. I'd like to thank the, you know, the town administration for their help with this town meeting, especially the town administrator and assistant town administrator, the Select Board, and the Finance Committee for their help with the meeting. And a special thanks to the town clerk and her team who did a heck of a job tonight with the voting, LCTV and the IT department. A lot of work, a lot of work putting this together and we thank them. We can't wait to do it again in the fall, so... I will now accept a motion to dissolve the town meeting. And second, all those in favor, aye. Those opposed, two thousand twenty-four, the annual town meeting is dissolved.